Good evening and welcome to the Calabasas City Council meeting of Wednesday, November 10th, 2021. It's shortly after 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Tonight, I'm joined by Mayor Pro Tem Mary Sue Mauer, council members Peter Kraut, Alicia Weintraub, and David Shapiro, as well as staff. Pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, this meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means. Members of the city council may teleconference into the meeting without noticing each teleconference location from which a member is participating in a public meeting. In accordance with the governor's executive orders and in an effort to reduce the risk of spreading coronavirus COVID-19, only members of the city council and city staff will participate in person at City Hall. The meeting will be broadcast and city staff, excuse me, the meeting will be broadcast on CTV Channel 3, and the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at www.cityofcalabasas.com/CTVLive. If you plan to provide public comment, please press Raise Hand if you're joining via Zoom, or Star 9 if you're joining via phone, and Star 6 to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. In the event of quorum, the city council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage not corrected within 15 minutes, or in the event of disruption which prevents the city from broadcasting the meeting to and receiving comment from members of the public using the Zoom or a telephone call-in system, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. Any other item, agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Communications Director, Michael Russo.
Good evening, council. Put your right hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mauer.
Aye.
Mayor Bosadjen.
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Harry, slide zero.
Okay. Now, we met in closed session prior to this meeting. We also met in closed session yesterday, November 9th. Do you have anything to report, Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider three items yesterday, three items of anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances not known to potential plaintiffs, and no report of action was taken. City council met this evening to consider four items, conference of labor negotiator regarding all underrepresented employees, conference of real property negotiator regarding the 27040 Malibu Hills Road property, conference of legal counsel regarding existing litigation, TNHC Canyon Oaks LLC for the city of Calabasas, and public employee performance evaluation for the city manager. No report of action was taken in any of the seven closed session items. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you have confidentiality agreements signed by everybody yet?
Not by all five in hand.
Okay, how many do you have?
We have two, Mr. Mayor.
Two, okay.
Two, and I have one or two more in my hand.
Okay, if everyone could get theirs in, in a timely manner, it'd be appreciated. All right. Before we go to presentations, let me, let me just tell everybody, obviously, we've not done this ever before. So we're doing a hybrid meeting, as we promised, and please bear with us, if there are any glitches, we'll work through them as best we can. Because it's difficult to be up here speaking a lot with masks, we will be taking a break every hour, just a short break. So be prepared for that as well. And most every one of our participants, except for staff, is going to be virtual. So we will start with our first presentation. The Mayor's Youth Council Cup is being presented tonight to Calabasas High School for winning the voter registration drive in September. The Mayor's Youth Council Civic Engagement Subcommittee held a voter registration drive during National Voter Registration Day in September. The Subcommittee registered 36 students at Calabasas High School and three students at Viewpoint School. Hence, this year, the Mayor's Youth Cup, Youth Council Cup is once again being presented to Calabasas High School. With us today are the Mayor's Youth Council Chair, Jacob Rossoff, the Secretary, Zachary Rossoff, and Civic Engagement Subcommittee Leader, Melissa Eddy, as well as the Los Verginis Unified School District Board President Angela Cupbill and Superintendent Dr. Dan Stepanowski. So, we have them here virtually. We could ask them to join. Welcome. We have the cup. Let me just show the audience. So here's the cup. Very heavy. Congratulations. I'll put it down. And would anyone from the Mayor's Youth Council like to say anything?
Um, yeah, I could talk. I, I don't think Zachary is able to make it yet. I know he's going to come later. And I don't see Melissa here, so I could speak for them.
Okay, if you could introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, I'm Jacob Rossoff. I'm the Chair of the Mayor's Youth Council, and I am a member of the Civic Engagement Subcommittee. This was one of the projects that we were very passionate about because, you know, this is like directly involving the youth in our government. And so, you know, the youth are the future. So it's very important that we, you know, start early to get involved in our city government and to get in our state government. So yeah, this was a really great opportunity, and I'm so glad that, you know, Calabasas High School won. I go there. So yeah, I really thought this was a great project.
Thank you, and congratulations. And turning to the school board representatives, would anybody like to speak from the school district at all, or say anything?
Uh, I'd just like to say on behalf of the board, we're very proud of our students at Calabasas High. They're always doing great things. They're so civically engaged, and we are excited for them to, to win this. So, well done.
Congratulations. Um, let me turn to the city clerk. Is there anybody from the public who has called in or wishes to speak, or has raised their hand?
No, Mr. Mayor. I don't see anyone wishing to speak on this item.
Okay. Yeah, we, I asked. Yeah, we're going to turn to colleagues next. So now we can turn to our colleagues. So Alicia, would you like to say something?
Sure, I just want to congratulate and thank Jacob for such a great job on this endeavor. We have such a tremendous Mayor's Youth Council, and this is just one of the great programs and activities that they do for the community. But getting our youth to register to vote, can't think of anything more important. So thank you so much, and congratulations to Calabasas High School. And I'm so sorry, I still don't even know exactly where to look. I'm looking at Angela and Dan and Jake and Jacob, but I don't even know where the cameras are. So bear with us. This is our, our first meeting like this. But congratulations again, really excited.
Okay, would anyone here like to say anything, Mary Sue or Peter?
Congratulations, Calabasas High School.
I can't hear you.
Congratulations to everyone at Calabasas High School, and it sounds like it would be a great competition to have between all seniors, each class, year after year, to try and beat your record of 36. So congratulations.
And I too would like to offer my congratulations to the, to the youth of Calabasas High School, and I'd also challenge you to get the other schools involved. There's a lot of schools in Los Verginis Municipal School District, and throw the gauntlet. Get those other schools to rise up to the challenge and make it a real competition next year. And let's get everyone involved. It's fantastic that you guys are getting out the vote. Keep it up.
David?
Thank you. I'll join everyone in congratulating you. Jacob and the entire Mayor's Youth Council, the undefeated, actually. This is the second year in a row you've won the cup. So at least we have that going for us at Calabasas High School, among other things. Congratulations. Keep up the great, great work.
Okay, thank you very much, Jacob. And we'll have the other two representatives from the school district stay, but thank you and have a good evening. All right, because our next item is a recognition of Dan Stepanowski Superintendent. And he received, what we're congratulating for is for his outstanding leadership and service to the community and its schools, and for receiving the 2021 Los Angeles County Superintendent of the Year Award. And as I mentioned earlier, we have school board president Angela Cupbill here with Dr. Stepanowski. And Dan, congratulations. We, we sent a certificate earlier, but unfortunately, the night that you were being honored in front of your board, we, none of the council members could make it. We all had conflicts that night, so we decided to invite you here to express our congratulations publicly. So would you like to tell us a little bit about the award and maybe a little bit, you know, add anything you wish to say? If you wish.
I'll throw in here, because on behalf of the board, I submitted him for this award.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it's, it's an award that the county gives every year. And even though we know we have a really big neighbor to the east that's a public school district, there are actually 80 school districts in the county. So it's a tremendous award, and we're very, the board is very pleased with Dr. Step. You know, we've had a lot of crisis going on between Woolsey Fire and a pandemic. It's been difficult times, but the board also feels that Dr. Stepanowski is a great superintendent when we don't have a crisis. So we're very proud of all the things we've achieved and really appreciate Mayor Bosadjen and the council having us here tonight. We value our partnership with you and the city. And Dr. Step is not just a great superintendent, he's a proud Calabasas High parent with a junior and senior at CHS. So thanks for having us, and thanks for the proclamation you sent earlier and recognizing him, because we really do appreciate it.
Dan, did you want to say something?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So appreciate, I know you've got a busy evening tonight, but I appreciate you having Ms. Cupbill and I here. We do treasure the relationship between the cities and the schools. Your support of the public schools in Los Verginis mean the world to us. It's a joy to live in 27 years in this community. I appreciate all you do. I know the countless hours our school board puts in, the countless hours the city council puts in, city staff. So I appreciate you as a resident, as a parent, and as superintendent colleague. Thank you, City Manager Kindon, and all your hard work. And he's hit the ground running 100 miles an hour. We appreciate that. We, we've been through a lot, obviously, as Ms. Cupbill mentioned, and the partnership relationship between our cities and Los Verginis mean the world to us. As a little plug, we've got a vaccine clinic coming up this Saturday. We've got over 91% of our students vaccinated, over 98, almost 99% of our staff. So this Saturday at AE Wright Middle School in the wonderful city of Calabasas, we will be doing a vaccine clinic free for five-year-olds through 11-year-olds who want to come by. We had 1,000 spots. Savon Pharmacy partnered with us, our own Albertson Savon in Calabasas. And last I checked, we had over 850 of those spots taken up. So if you want to, you can visit our website to, to register. But again, those are only for five-year-olds through 11-year-olds. The dose is about one-third the usual size. So we're not doing boosters or any shots for adults. And so appreciate your time tonight. Thanks for all your hard work.
Okay, let me turn to the city clerk. Do we have anyone from the public who has expressed a desire to comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have no one.
Colleagues? Peter, why don't we start with you?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start. We do have a long agenda tonight, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say congratulations. And I also do want to acknowledge, Dr. Stepanowski has really put courage on the line here, managing the pandemic, managing our school district in very difficult times, making some hard decisions. And you just have displayed some fantastic leadership, and we really appreciate what you've done.
Mary Sue?
I'd also like to congratulate you and wish you an early happy Veterans Day among your many, many, many acts of public service. To add to that, you are a veteran, and that is, is so admirable. I also want to thank the board. Under your leadership, Dr. Stepanowski, and with the board, you weathered the critical COVID crisis under extreme pressure from parents who wanted you to take the school district and the schools a different route. You and the board always put the students first and the teachers first, and I was so proud of you. And I know that's just one of your many, many recognitions. And in addition, responding to the murder of George Floyd and the demand for looking closer at our society, you, you've just raised the bar in creating awareness at your school and with your staff. And again, I'm so proud of you and, and wish you the best of luck. And thank you.
Alicia?
Just wanted to say congratulations again. I'm so proud of you for this, but I'm not surprised at all, working so closely with you and Angela last year. If we thought it was hard to close a city and then reopen it, I think dealing with parents and students definitely takes the cake. And you, you did not, you did what was best for the families in our community and the students and parents. And we were the first school district in LA County to reopen, and we just kept, you kept doing everything in the best interest to get our kids back in a safe manner. And as a parent, I'm so appreciative of that. And I just, I'm so proud to be a part of our school district under both of your leaderships. But Dan, I'm really couldn't, you deserve this so much. So I'm sorry we couldn't be with you the other night, but I'm so glad we could be with you here tonight, even if it's virtual. So congratulations again.
David?
And congratulations. I echo the sentiments that have already been stated about your great work and the board's hard work, especially during this past year and a half. And it continues, but you're doing beyond yeoman's work. And to be named LA County Superintendent of the Year is a tremendous honor. We're not talking about just our school district. You're talking about a huge, huge area, and it's deserved, deserving, deservedly so that you have been named and recognized for all your hard work and effort, far beyond what we all know. So thank you again for all your great work, great efforts, and continued great work on behalf of all our kids.
Um, I, okay.
I see a hand. It's Bridget.
Yes, I noticed that note. I can't see her, but yes, Bridget Carl, is she, can you bring her in to propose all the comment? This is for public comment, right?
Yes, correct. Bridget?
Ah, I see it now.
I'm sorry, my picture's not up, but I would just like to say to Dan how proud I am of him and the work that he's done. And it was during the pandemic that I saw the news, and Dan and his beautiful daughter were doing the trial for Pfizer. And it moved me so much to tears that I thought, what is, what an important, you know, move and such a, you know, champion of what we needed to go through to solve this COVID experience. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you and what you've done for the community and for your students. And I will miss you greatly. So you're a wonderful person. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will thank you, Dan and Angela, for coming to our meeting. Much appreciated. And we will move on to the next presentation. If we have Bridget Carl, we could bring her into, into the room with a picture? With, I mean, with video? Or maybe not. We're not, I guess we're not going to have the video. Is she in?
She's in, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sorry, I'm just not able to see it on here. All right. So we're honoring Bridget tonight. We're recognizing her for her distinguished service on the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce as, to the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce as CEO and President. Oh, there she is. She did two stints as President from 2012 to 2016, and then came back temporarily supposedly in 2019 for a few weeks while the chamber got its affairs in order and wound up staying for another stint from 2019 to 2021. It's been a pleasure to work with you, Bridget. And let me show you, we have what we have for you. We have this plaque for you, our tile plaque, and it says, Bridget Carl, in recognition of your distinguished service to the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce, CEO, President, 2012 to 2016, 2019 to 2021. It's got our city seal and all the council members' names. And it's been a very, very challenging time. I can't think of another time that was more challenging for businesses than this last year and a half or two years, almost. And you were at the helm. Unfortunately, it was, I know how much work it was. And I know the business community was very appreciative of all the efforts you made to help them out, particularly small businesses that were having a very hard time surviving. I know the personal touch made a difference, and I know how much you cared. And of course, we, as a partner with the Chamber of Commerce, a longstanding partner, we, of course, also were very appreciative to have you there. And we're sorry to see you go. We understand that people move on. And, you know, I'm going to share with you just a quick, quick little story. Bridget's probably going to kill me. When they brought Bridget back to the Chamber of Commerce, you know, they interviewed her, the newspapers, and I figured they'd have a nice article about Bridget. Okay, the headline in one of the papers was, "Old President Chosen to Be Chair of Commerce Leader." Sorry, Bridget, I had to do that. But anyhow, I did want to congratulate you and see if you wanted to say anything. Or actually, maybe we should do the public comments first.
We have no public comments.
No public comments, okay.
I take that back. I take that back. We do have one.
Okay, so let's hear, Mark Levinson Law, he was formerly Chairman of the Board of Chamber of Commerce. Mark?
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, name and, well, I kind of said your name, but.
That's okay. It's Mark Levinson. I live in the city of Los Angeles. First, I wanted to thank the council and the city for recognizing Bridget for all she has done, not just this term, but for all, not just her two terms as President, in fact, but prior to that, Bridget worked with the chamber. Bridget, thank you for all you have done, been a true leader and a friend, and the city, the chamber, and the business community, and our residents are certainly the better for your having been here. So thank you, best wishes. We will obviously keep in contact. And again, thank you for all you have done.
Yes, you're always welcome here, Bridget. Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we'll start. Alicia, you want to start?
Sure. Bridget, we're going to miss you so much. It was a once-in-a-lifetime experience working with you during the pandemic. But what you did for the businesses, the members of the chamber, our non-chamber members who are businesses, you just, you did everything possible. And it went above and beyond anyone's job duty. And I know everyone is so grateful and appreciative for what you did. Any, any change to the news and any grant opportunities or loans or anything that could help businesses, you were on top of it, getting the information out. But one thing that I don't know if everyone knows about Bridget is, I guess when people Google City of Calabasas, somehow they'll write it in on a Google search, and the Calabasas Chamber comes up. So Bridget actually gets a lot of calls that should be directed to the city, whereas someone might, you know, anyone else might be like, here's the number to City Hall. But Bridget tries to help. She would call me and be like, I got a call from this person. They need help. What should we do? How can you help? And she just, she cares so much about everyone in this community. And I think, I always think about that, all those calls that you got that had nothing to do with the businesses, but just had to do with people needing help in our community and the extra efforts that you went. So we're going to miss you so much. I know it's going to be a great next chapter for you, but the door is always open here, and we will absolutely stay in touch. So giving you a virtual hug.
David?
Bridget, I join everybody in congratulating you. You loved it so much, you came back for a second time, right? Or is it like the Godfather where they pulled you back in, you tried to get out? I don't think so. I think it's a labor of love. You've shown that, your work here with all, all the chamber members, all the business community, all the community for all these years, has been incredible. And even during, especially during the pandemic, the most difficult time for anyone, you reached out to all the businesses, you worked with the city, you put on a mayor's lunch, which was frankly, one of the only things we were able to do in the past year and a half, and did it exceptionally well. Your, your tireless work and caring for the business community for the city is not, is totally appreciated. And you will be missed, but I know we'll see you and we'll be in touch, and you will not disappear. Thank you again, two times, very much.
Peter?
Bridget, I have to say, I'm going to miss you a lot. You were fantastic as a representative of the Chamber of Commerce. I, I know how skillfully you handled our Calabasas City grants during the COVID times. And I saw how quickly you transitioned the Chamber of Commerce. You were right there to introduce me to so many new businesses in Calabasas and, and make those connections. And I truly appreciate that. I remember that we did a food tasting with Tifa in a virtual meeting, and I wasn't sure how that virtual food tasting was going to work out, but it was fantastic. All your creative ideas, they just, they really carried the chamber through difficult times. Thank you for everything that you've done.
Okay, and Mary Sue?
Oh, Bridget, it's sad to see you go. And while certainly most people know you because of your leadership on the Chamber of Commerce, I think one of your greatest accomplishments was when you worked closely with the city, the Special Olympics Organizing Committee, our staff, John Bingham, to help host Great Britain athletes from the Special Olympics. That was an extraordinary time at the city of Calabasas, and you were at the helm of making it all happen. They lived at the King Gillette Ranch, you coordinated their movements. I mean, it was really beyond what anyone that already had a full-time job could possibly do. And you did it with such love and care. And I, I thank you for that, and I'll always remember you for that. Good luck to you.
And now, Bridget, we don't have any other public comments, do we?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Now, Bridget, it's, it's up to you.
I just wanted, so I'm really not good at this, because I'd rather speak on behalf of other people than myself. But I just want to thank everybody. It was wonderful to work with such a great group. And, you know, this was an exceptional situation. The city council was extraordinary, and the support you showed to the business community, that always felt, you know, on the outside, but just felt very, you know, the compassion that the city showed and the work that we did with the grant was exceptional. And, and I know so many businesses in the city are, you know, very grateful. And it was an honor to work with everybody. Alicia, thank you for the, you know, early morning phone calls, late-night phone calls between whatever. Mari also, for doing a lot of those voice messages that I received. And yes, I did get phone calls on fishing licenses that I had no idea what they were about. But, you know, we were trying to find those answers. So it was an honor. And I am so appreciative of everybody. And, you know, I work closely with Alicia and James the most, and I really appreciate the efforts and the time you gave me, even though that, you know, some of the times was like, you know, complaining, but at the same time, everybody stepped up and really helped the community. And I'm very grateful for that. And I love leaving on this high note. The chamber is in good hands, and I know they're going to find the right person to, you know, follow through and make sure everything stays as strong as it is with the city. And I just thank everybody so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll, we'll bring you your plaque. We have another presentation. This is to County Assessor Jeffrey Prang on how COVID-19 has affected the structure of the County Assessor's Office. This is a presentation from him. Market rates and property values. So I think I see Jeffrey Prang's name there. Is he, just tell me when he's in.
He's in, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Jeffrey Prang, it's been a long time since I've seen you.
It has been a long time, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to see you. Nice to see so many friends on the council. And thank you for giving me a couple of minutes of your time. I know you have a very busy meeting, but I appreciate the opportunity to provide a little bit of information about my office and services, as well as a brief update about the local real estate market in Calabasas. So I'll try to be, be brief.
Okay.
I know that my, my Chief of Public Affairs, Robert Porte, attended your State of the City last month. I hope he made a good impression. But if not, let me begin by explaining just a little bit about what the assessor does, and importantly, what I do not do. and importantly, what I do not do. Because one thing that people thinks that I do is the one thing I don't do, and that is collecting taxes. I don't collect taxes. There's another guy who does that. He's got a very intuitive title. He's called the Tax Collector. It's uh, we're assessors, we, we, we're real estate appraisers. The Tax Collector is the one that deals with your money and your bills. For those who are unfamiliar with the Assessor's Office, I'm one of three county-wide elected officials. The other two are a little bit more uh, well-known or perhaps infamous. Uh, that's the Sheriff and the District Attorney. I administer a department with about thirteen hundred employees located in six different offices throughout the county. And as Assessor, I'm responsible for assessing all taxable real property, which includes landed improvements as well as the value of what's known as business personal property. This includes furniture, equipment and machinery, although it also includes aircraft, both commercial and general aviation, aviation aircraft, mobile homes, boats, and believe it or not, even racehorses. We are the largest local property assessment agency in the United States and we're responsible for valuing over two and a half million real property parcels and business assessments every year. Uh, the primary job of the Assessor is the production of what we call the annual assessment role, which is essentially the inventory of all properties uh, property in the uh, in the county. The um, the role serves a number of important functions. Um, the first, obviously, it's the basis for the property tax system. But it also serves as an important planning document for local governments as they prepare their budgets in anticipation of property tax revenues. Um, and then it also serves as an important economic indicator, giving some insight as to the health of the real estate market. Um, I can report that the uh, the assessment role for 2021 grew by over sixty two billion dollars. Um, that's a three point seven percent growth rate over uh, the previous year, uh, which was about a six percent growth rate. The total assessed value of all taxable property in the county this year is valued at more than one point seven trillion with a T dollars, which will generate over seventeen billion dollars in property tax revenue, which is allocated to local governments such as cities, school districts and is, is uh, spent on services that we all rely on, such as roads, hospitals, libraries, et cetera. This year's assessment role represents the eleventh consecutive year of growth in the county since the recession of uh, uh, two thousand eight to two thousand ten. Um, to give you an idea of what's going on in the local market, I've included a table here that displays the property value growth percentages and partial counts for Calabasas as well as a couple of neighboring um, communities. As you can see, the total assessed value of the City of Calabasas is nine point three billion. Um, obviously, the market value is considerably higher. The, the, the one reason why the growth rate may seem a little bit low in Calabasas is that there was a large uh, exemption for viewpoint school that was not processed in uh, twenty twenty roll closure, but was aided, added later as a correction. Uh, and had this uh, this exemption been processed on time, the growth rate in the city this year would have been a little over two and a half percent. Although this may seem low, it's very typical of Calabasas and it shows, I think, the resilience of the local uh, local area the, the local market. The, the residential real estate market in the county fared reasonably well through COVID and the pandemic. In fact, home prices, not including condos, rose dramatically over the last year as very limited inventory um, and historically low mortgage rates created a very competitive market for buyers. Um, the pandemic pushed the county's already uh, very competitive market into such overdrive that million-dollar homes have become the norm in a growing number of neighborhoods. Uh, the typical home price has reached at least a million dollars in fifty different LA neighborhoods since March of twenty twenty. And we think that this is likely to continue, although as more supply becomes available, the increases might uh, begin to slow down a bit. Calabasas has experienced the impact of this tight housing market. This last month, the median sales price per single-family home in the city reached a high of one million five hundred forty thousand. Um, as you can see on the chart, Calabasas and surrounding area all have median sales prices well above the county average. The pandemic also had an adverse on, on uh, impact on business operations um, of causing taxable business property, again, such as furniture, machinery, equipment to go unused. And as a result, this property could have experienced a reduction value. As a response, we have proactively been providing property tax relief to over forty seven thousand small businesses in the county to reflect the impact of COVID. Thus far, we reduced those values by over two hundred ten million dollars. In Calabasas, we reduced the personal property assessments for about two hundred forty businesses out of the five hundred eighty-three businesses that pay business personal property tax. That's about forty-one percent of all uh, business assessments in the city and translates into uh, over five hundred seventy thousand dollar in, dollars introductions. Uh, the last big thing I want to mention was a uh, a, a public policy issue dealing with Proposition Nineteen. This was a measure that passed on the ballot about a year ago. Um, it's a measure that uh, affects seniors and, and as well as inheritance property. And Prop Nineteen does two primary things. The first component of the measure allows a homeowner who's at least fifty-five years of age, severely disabled or uh, additionally victims um, of the natural disasters to transfer their property tax base with them, essentially make it portable when they sell their home and buy a new one. It expands previous benefits and now allows qualified homeowners to buy a home anywhere in the state. It allows you to transfer that base year up to three times and it allows you to transfer the tax base to a home of any value. Uh, this adds a great deal of options for senior citizens. The second component, however, refers to the transfer of property between family members, specifically between parents and children and grandparents and grandchildren. And Prop Nineteen greatly reduced those benefits that were, that previously existed uh, in, in transferring property between family members. Now, in order to qualify for uh, a parent-to-child exclusion and to avoid complete reassessment, a couple of things have to occur. Uh, under the new law, the only property that your children uh, can inherit along with the low property tax base is your primary residence. Unlike the previous law, no other property now qualifies. Secondly, in order to qualify, a child has to uh, to inherit the property in a tax base, they have to make that their primary home within one year and file the Homer's exemption. Prop Nineteen also puts limits on the value of the primary residence that you can give to your children. Generally speaking, if your home is worth less than a million dollars, your kids can inherit the property and there'll be no reassessment. But if the property exceeds a million dollars, as it does in uh, in Calabasas, there will be a new tax rate. It'll be a blended tax rate. Uh, they can inherit the original rate up to a million dollars and the remaining value over a million will be assessed at uh, at market value. If you own additional property, such as a rental property, commercial property, that will all be reassessed to market for your heirs. Um, and the very last thing I want to mention was a uh, uh, was some tax savings programs that my office manages. Uh, we manage an array of programs for seniors, veterans and victims of natural disasters as well as nonprofits. Last year, we provided about six hundred fifty million dollars in tax savings through these various uh, tax exemptions and exclusions. The one I want to hot, highlight this evening is the Homer's exemption. It's our most accessible program. Anybody owns their home and occupies it as their principal residence as of January first qualifies. Uh, it reduces your assessed value by about seven thousand dollars for tax purposes. It's not a huge savings. Um, I think the legislature probably needs to raise this um, because it hasn't been raised since nineteen seventy-two. Uh, but it saves you a little bit of money, about seventy bucks annually on your, on your property tax bill. Uh, we estimate that about a third of county homeowners don't file for the Homer's exemption simply because they don't know about it. And as a result, about thirty million dollars in unredeemed savings um, go unclaimed. In Calabasas, about thirty-two percent or two thousand eligible homeowners don't claim the uh, um, the Homer's exemption. It's a simple application. You can download it online from our website. Uh, I did put some statistics in here about how many uh, failed to claim the uh, uh, failed to claim the Homer's exemption in the surrounding communities. Um, I know it's not a huge amount of savings, but uh, for anybody who's unemployed or um, um, fixed incomes, I'm sure that any type of savings can help. But that pretty much wraps up my update and introduction to my op, my office. Um, I want to encourage you to check out our, our newly launched website at assessor.lac county.gov. And if you own property, I strongly urge you to sign up for our monthly newsletter, which uh, provides a lot of helpful tips to help you navigate uh, re- real estate uh, in uh, L, LA County. But I appreciate very much the opportunity to be with you this evening, you know, if you're stick, if it's
Thank you, Jeff. Um, I did have a couple questions. Uh, well, first of all, it's really, should I be muted? I'm not sure.
I can hear you.
No, 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 I'm sorry, me. Should I remain muted?
On the PC, yes.
Okay, sorry. It just keeps flashing that I'm muted. All right. So Jeff, um, this is our first hybrid me, so we're kind of working the kinks out. It's very good to see you. Um, I feel like a little kinship with you. You and I were elected on the same night, like almost twenty-five years ago. You and West Hollywood and me here in Calabasas. And you were also Contract Cities President, uh, right before me. So um, it's good to see you. Um, I have a, a couple of questions about, you mentioned Prop Nineteen. I had heard there was an effort to file something to put on the twenty twenty-two ballot to overturn Prop Nineteen. Are you aware of that or what the status is?
So I'm, it's not a measure, the, the proposal by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association is not to overturn Prop Nineteen, but it is to restore the parent-to-child uh, inheritance benefits that existed uh, prior to Prop Nineteen. And they uh, have submitted uh, language to the Attorney General for title and summary. Um, one of the things about Prop Nineteen that uh, the California Association of Realtors, which sponsored the measure to get the benefits that they want for seniors, uh, it was perceived that that was going to have a financial impact. So the way they uh, they mitigated the financial impact, but it was by reducing family inheritance benefits. A lot of people who voted for it weren't aware of that and they're pretty mad about it. So uh, I think there's now a measure to correct that and restore those uh, those inheritance benefits.
As a follow-up, um, has there been another measure filed to um, undo either partially or completely Proposition Thirteen?
Um, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
But, but things are always uh, when it comes to Prop Thirteen, there's always uh, somebody nibbling around the edges.
Okay, um, I did see a hand in public comment, but I think that's your deputy. Did he want to speak as well?
Um, probably not.
He was running the presentation, Mr. Mayor. That's why he wanted
Oh, he was running the, okay.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, and uh, do we, I don't see any other hands. Is anyone called in?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have no
All right, we'll turn to the council comments. Peter, you want to start? If you have anything, Mary Sue, do you have anything?
I, I do have a quick comment. Thank you very much, Assessor Prang, for that presentation. And uh, there was so much there. I didn't realize the number of programs that you ran that benefited homeowners or seniors or peoples with disabilities. I'd like um, to ask our staff to kind of take your PowerPoint and and uh, use our social media magic to promote it. You're doing great work there, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that pretty much.
Alicia?
Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Um, I just had a question, if you could discuss for the public. What about people who have their property tax bill in hand right now and um, are possibly struggling with that because of impacts from the pandemic and wages and lost income?
Sure, well, the uh, you know, the property tax bill is actually multiple bills in one. Um, that confuses a lot of people. People will say, will complain that their property taxes go, go up. And the truth is, your property taxes don't go up. We only assess your property at the time that you purchase it and that it is locked in um, with a modest uh, and maximum two percent CPI adjustment that could be applied annually. This year, the CPI adjustment was only one percent. Uh, the bill includes uh, usually a laundry list of things such as schools, transportation, vector control, sewage, stormwater. None of those things are technically property taxes. They're billed on your property tax bill. But usually, if you had a really big increase uh, on that bill, it's not your property taxes. It's one of those other taxes that are included on the property tax bill. Um, tends to get me in a lot of trouble. People wonder why we're, why we're increasing their taxes and uh, we're not. That's usually somebody else, some other tax, some other agency, which is uh, increasing those uh, those taxes.
Right, but I guess my question is, regardless of where or who's receiving the money, what is there any relief for property owners who, because of the pandemic, are struggling to pay that bill? Regardless of what government agency it's going to.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so well, the um, uh, again, the, the office that deals with billing and uh, property tax billing is the Office of the Treasurer Tax Collector. And if you're having a difficult time uh, paying, you could set up a payment plan with the Treasurer Tax Collector's office. Um, it's uh, it's a pretty rigid uh, format. I don't have all the details uh, at hand, but there, but there is, there are some things available. Um, if you, if you somehow other were, were late on your property tax, uh, uh, if you're late on your, your, turn your taxes in on time, you could also submit a uh, uh, a request saying that due to COVID, you weren't able to pay on time and the Treasurer Tax Collector may be able to cancel any penalties that uh, would normally apply. Usually a pay, a penalty for late payment is ten percent of the bill.
Thank you so much.
Truly.
Okay, David, did you want to say anything?
Thank you for being here and, and uh, the presentation, Jeff. Appreciate it very much. A quick question which has been asked to me before is the, I know it's not much, but it's about seventy dollars, as you indicated, the homeowner's exemption. Is there any way that could be an automatic uh, exemption uh, rather than having to fill out forms and, and maybe if a homeowner moves, it's incumbent upon them or sells their property to then rectify that?
It would be um, it would be helpful if we could do that. We're not, uh, assessors don't have the authority to, to do that. We are still require a uh, a wet signature stating, you know, uh, with a, stating under penalty of perjury that that is your primary residence. Um, it is uh, certainly uh, right for tinkering by the legislature to make that uh, easier. It would be great if we could just apply that to uh, uh, to all, all homeowners. It would be great if the legislature would also increase that when they uh, when they first applied the seven thousand dollar uh, exemption. It was like nineteen seventy-two when properties were considerably less expensive.
Thanks very much. Again, appreciate your being.
Okay, Jeff, we're going to wish you well and uh, thank you for coming. And we know you go to all the cities and we're honored to have you here.
Real pleasure to be with you. Great to see you out there and council members. Thank you again.
Okay. Our next presentation is going to be from the Los Virginist Municipal Water District. They're going to give us an update on the statewide drought and proposed local response. And we have coming in to join us, Michael McNutt from the Los Virginist Municipal Water District. He is the Public Affairs and Communications Manager and he'll be making the presentation. Uh, is he in the uh, has he joined us? There he is. Okay. Hello, Mike.
Hi, Mayor, how are you?
Great, great. Um, welcome. And I know you have a PowerPoint and so I'm going to give you uh, give you the floor. Just introduce yourself and go at it.
That sounds good. Just real quick, um, should I, is somebody going to put the PowerPoint up for me or do you want me to share my screen?
Share your screen, Michael.
Go ahead and share my screen.
Correct.
Okay, no problem. Um, okay, first, yes, hi, I'm Mike McNutt. I am the Public Affairs Communications Manager for Los Virginist Municipal Water District. Um, I work in Calabasas and I'm grateful to be here to share and talk with you about a very important subject that is impacting all of us. And I also want to say uh, hello to um, all of the council and I do appreciate you giving me a little bit of time uh, to discuss this. And I, I too will try to make this as quick as possible, um, as I know that you have a full agenda tonight. So let me go ahead and share my screen here and let's get going. There we go, okay. Let's go with that, let's see if it works. And I can see that it's there. Let's see if I can do this. All right. Okay, did everyone see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so I'm here to talk with you a little bit about uh, what's going on in the state when it comes to our drought, which I'm sure everybody is, is uh, aware of. It's been all over the news for a number of months now. Um, and it looks like that this is something that's going to continue to um, progress forward um, based upon the projections that we see and currently what, what's going on. Um, and I also want to share with you what we've done as a water district and the things that may impact you as uh, both residents and our homeowners and businesses. So we will just uh, get to it here. Okay, so um, this slide really highlights sort of like an imbalance in the state where two-thirds of the population live, you know, here in Southern California where we do. But the vast majority of our water supply comes from all the way up in the north. Now, I know that all of council um, is very well aware that it takes four hundred miles of uh, Aqueduct to get our water supply to us from the Northern Sierra Mountains. And that's a long way to go. So what happens in the north impacts us here in the south. And I think that that's something just to keep in mind. And uh, just for other people who don't know, um, as it stands right at this moment, we do not have a local source of water, which means that we rely one hundred percent on water that is imported from all the way up in the north. I think that's something for anybody that's on this um, on this Zoom call right now to kind of, kind of understand. Um, let's talk about the drought real quick. So we are now in year two, going on to year three of uh, of a drought. And technically, some would say that we really never got out of a drought. We had a couple of really wet years. We had a couple of really wet years, but that was kind of in the middle of several years. You can see here from 2012 to 2016 where it was really dry. Been a couple of wet years and now we're right back into another drought again. How does, what happens? How did we get here? Well, what normally happens is that we don't get a lot of precipitation. And what will happen with that is we won't get a lot of runoff or snowpack, which when it does gently warm up in the spring, it runs off and fills our reservoirs. The one thing I think that people don't, may not understand is how temperature affects the precipitation, more specifically the soil itself and how it makes it arid. So what happens is that we expect runoff to happen, but it may not materialize as we assume going into the reservoirs to store water to ultimately send it down here to the south. If you look at the reservoir levels right now, all throughout the state, all up and down, the California Aqueduct or the State Water Project, all of them or the vast majority of them are well, well below what they should be right now. Groundwater basins, which is normally used to irrigate a lot of crops in the Central Valley, is being depleted rapidly, which is another issue because now we have to rely upon the runoff from the Northern Sierras to help irrigate the agricultural industry, which is one of the biggest components of our state economy here. Water rights are being curtailed because there's not enough water to go around to meet the demands and needs. And all facets of what we know, urban, agricultural, environmental, manufacturing, et cetera, these are all, they all have straws in a bowl of water and everybody wants as much as they can take. But there's not enough to go around to satisfy everything or everybody's needs. So when I was talking about runoff and the aridity of soil and due to these high temperatures, this is what I mean. So here on the left-hand side, you can see that there was a, this is from last year, 72% of the snow, of the peak snowpack, and that's actually a pretty solid number. But what happened was it only generated 38% of the water year runoff. And why, and the same thing over here to the right, we've got 88% snowpack. And this is in the Rocky Mountains. And that runoff goes into the Colorado River, which is our other major source of water for certain parts of Southern California. But that only resulted in a 33% runoff. And the reason for that is because the soil is so dry because of the elongated high temperatures that a lot of the runoff was just being sucked into the ground like it was just a thirsty sponge. And so it didn't result in as much runoff as we possibly could have needed. These two pictures here, I think, are really indicative of where we are right now. Again, the one on the left, Lake Oroville, the one on the right, Lake Mead. Two of the largest reservoirs in the country right there, and this is what they look like. So what has the governor done? What has the state done? All the way back in April, the governor declared an initial drought emergency, saying, hey, we need to take this seriously. And it was sort of just like a call to action. Hey, we need to like, I want all the water agencies to start thinking about how this is going to impact them long term. And let's start getting our plans together on what we may do if this continues. Moved in May 10th, the governor went ahead and expanded the drought emergency to 41 counties throughout the state. And as the summer continued, all the way in July, he again expanded the drought emergency to 50 counties, but also called for us to go, for all of us as a volunteer, to curb our water use by 15%. So it was a voluntary 15% water reduction. Move all the way here into October or, you know, last month, there was another call to redouble conservation efforts and an expansion of drought emergencies statewide. So now the entire state is in a drought emergency from the governor's actions. And that includes Los Angeles. LA County and Ventura and some of the surrounding areas were exempt from that until here in October. So this is sort of the process all dating all the way back to April at the state level of what's happened regarding the drought. What have we done here locally? So all the way back on June 15th, the Los Virginist Municipal Water District Board voted on declaring a stage one water shortage alert. And this is really implementing, as I alluded to earlier, the governor asking the water agencies to start looking at implementing their water shortage contingency plans and what that means. And we went ahead and did that all the way back on June 15th. In fact, we were either the first water agency in the entire state or certainly in Southern California to move forward with declaring a water or implementing our water shortage contingency plan. So move forward, not even just a little bit more than a month, just barely over a month. We decided to go from stage one to stage two. And what that meant was it's a water shortage or shortage warning. And what we did again was just really ask our customers to voluntarily reduce their water consumption by 15%. You know, move a little bit, move another month into August in Metropolitan Water District where we purchase our water, issued their own water supply alert. And then move all the way up in here till last week when our district board, looking at all of the concerns, all of the possibilities, all of the possibilities of us getting a certain amount of water allocation from the state, we decided to go ahead and move into stage three of our water shortage contingency plan by declaring a local drought emergency. And what that means is that we are asking and we'll be enforcing limited outdoor irrigation on lawns and ornamental gardens. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means. So what does that mean for all of us? What we're asking everybody to do is it's a mandatory 25% water reduction. So a lot of people go, well, if I'm already doing a good job, how that's going to impact me? And there's other people who are saying, well, why does it, I don't care. I can afford this. It's not, it doesn't matter. I can take care. I can pay my water bill. I'm in good standing for Water District. That kind of thing. So it's kind of a mishmash of stuff. We have people who are doing really well. We have people who could be doing better and we have people who are really not doing well. And we need to kind of focus on getting them to understand that they are also part of the solution instead of just continuing to be part of the problem. So what we mean is 70% of your water use that you, on average, that you use at your house is used for outdoor irrigation, normally of ornamental turf or other types of gardens. That is where the vast majority of savings is going to be found. And so what we're asking for people to do is minimize their outdoor watering. And how we're going to do that, and I'll show you that here in a minute. But this is really where we have to focus this on. Most of our communities have already been doing a fantastic job with using water indoors, stuff for cooking, bathing, cleaning, so forth and so on. Most people use on average about 55 gallons of water per person per day for indoor usages. But like I said, when you start asking your, we start asking where you can save, it's not necessarily indoor. Maybe some people can here and there, but generally it's outside for irrigation. So what we're asking you to do is take control, quote unquote, of your irrigation controller. And there's some easy steps before. Most people obviously can know where their controller is. But what you want to do is go in and check the days and duration of when that is programmed to water. What we want you to do is take the days, times of duration, and that'll equal how many minutes a week that you're watering. You want to multiply it by point seven five. The reason why we're saying point seven five is because there's a mandatory 25% reduction that we're implementing and we need you to do that. And then what we're asking for is to take that figure and then just spread it over two days. So we're asking you to water two days a week with a 25% reduction and how, and the amount of water that you're putting on your lawn and ornamental gardens. Now, all of us here are on water budgets. Every single home in the district service area has their own individual, unique water budget is specific to their house. So what does that equal? First, a water budget equals how many people reside in your house? It could be two, it could be three, it could be 10. As long as we know that, we'll make sure that you have enough water to satisfy how many people in your home. Then what we do is we look at how, how much irrigable area that you have outside. And then we calculate that into your water budget. Now, other people may have other needs. For instance, they may have like a ranch with horses or livestock. Might be elderly care in the home or other needs that you may not think about that need water. Dialysis patients, you know, that does stuff at home, if they may need more water. So we will provide them an adjusted budget to compensate for that. So when you look at a water budget, what we're trying to say to you is whatever you do to take 25% out of your budget, and again, I say that it's the easiest place to do that is for outdoor irrigation, that is where you're going to meet that 25% reduction, mandatory 25% reduction that we're asking all of the customers to do. So here are some other things to think about. When these mandatory measures, we're asking people not to irrigate between 10:00 and 5:00 PM during the heat of the day, when it might be windy, we're asking, and where there's more evaporation occurring. We want you to do it at other times before and after the sun. You cannot water 48 hours following a rain event, a measurable rain event. You cannot have water running off your property in any way, shape or form. There's no washing your sidewalks or driveways down with a hose. If you do wash your car at your house, you have to have a trigger nozzle, which pretty much everybody does so it can turn on and off the water when you release it. And all of the motels and hotels in the area, what we're asking to do is give multi-night guests options. Do not have their towels and linens replaced daily. They ask them if they want to do that, to conserve water on those, on cleaning the linens. And then at our restaurants, we're asking them to only serve water upon request rather than just automatically bring it to the table. These things we all should be somewhat understanding about because these are the same things that we had used two to three years ago when we were in the other drought, so to speak. So what are we going to do about enforcement? The first thing we're going to do is you're going to get a door hanger. Or if you're found to be wasting water, we will give you a door hanger and a warning letter to say, hey, by the way, we just want to let you know you could be doing better and that we're in stage three of our water shortage contingency plan. And here's the ways that we want you to do to conserve water. If that doesn't happen, the first offense after that initial one will be a $100 fine and then a $200 fine. And then the fourth offense would be a $500 fine. If it continues to go forward, what we're going to do is in exceedance of 150% of the water budget, we probably will start applying wasteful water use penalty in terms of money per unit of water use, anywhere between $2.50 to $5 per unit. If that still doesn't work, we're going to go ahead and either turn your water off completely or we're going to install a flow restriction device. If you're not, if somebody is not getting the point that they need to be taking this seriously. Very, very highly unlikely, but it is something as an option for us to do. How are we getting people to know what's going on? We have been doing a robust community outreach effort using every possible platform that we can think of. Newsletters, ads in papers, cable TV ads, radio and TV ads, obviously our webpage, our website. We've been going out and doing outreach to the homeowners associations, social media and things like we're doing here and providing this information to city councils. So we've been doing this all throughout our service area. There is one thing that I think all homeowners could be interested in is rebates. Where are we directing everybody to? SoCalwatersmart.com. And you can see here on this page, all of the possibilities that one could get for rebates for doing water conserving appliances or other types of things like turf replacement and stuff, so forth. In fact, I think that this landscape transformation program, which I believe is $2 per square foot, may be even up to $3 per square foot at this point in time. And people can find that again on SoCalwatersmart.com. Here at the district, we have a weather-based irrigation control program. You can actually get one installed at your property. We can come out and program it and we can make sure that you're managed correctly. And for some people, we also have been already putting in automated meters and homes throughout the district. And the great thing about that is you can sign up for free on a portal that will allow you to look at your water usage in near real time. What it does is give you an idea of where you can possibly start curbing to get down to that mandatory 25% reduction. So the other thing that we're asking the community to do is be additional eyes and ears for us. If somebody happens to be walking a dog, riding a bike, doing whatever outside, they see, you know, like this picture here, a broken sprinkler head. If they don't feel comfortable, like letting somebody know that maybe, you know, if they're out in their yard or something, hey, you know, your sprinklers, I didn't know if you saw this, or water's running off your property and having a conversation. You can simply let us know, maybe just what the address is and email us at StopTheWaste@LVMWD.com. We have staff that is more than welcome to your, or that will be contacting property owners and actually going out and helping them understand where they can save water or even giving them pointers on how to initially program their smart controllers or their irrigation controllers and to see where they can curb water usage. And of course, you can always call the district headquarters at this number here and give us information about things that you see. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. First of all, I don't see any members of the public wishing to speak. Mari, do you know any?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We have no one.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions for you. Let me ask. The brown lawn, I really liked the little post-it. That was kind of cute. Thank you for your brown lawn. Am I correct in assuming that once a drought is over, that if you've let your lawn go brown, you're exempt from any penalties for having done so, like by a local ordinance or by an HOA provision? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a good question, Mayor. I would presume so. But I don't know that for sure. I can't honestly say that I know that for sure. I know that in the past, some homeowners associations have frowned upon that. But I also know that some of these regulations that are imposed by the state, especially, and some of these local, you know, ordinances that we're following from our administrative code, it potentially could supersede those and.
Let me ask the city attorney and let me see, do you know the latest one?
During any declared drought, there is state law that exempts a brown lawn from any HOA regulations and from the city's own regulations. And after a drought is over, if someone keeps the lawn brown, the city would not be imposing a fine on code enforcement exercising our discretion. As to an HOA after drought emergencies declared over, the state laws, I believe, would cover and exempt, folks, some penalties there, but I'll confirm that. That's the piece I don't know.
It's kind of important because if people are good enough to not water and then their lawn goes brown and they certainly don't want to get fined and then have to go to the expense of redoing their lawn, you know, every couple of years, you know, redoing everything just to be in compliance and to have to turn off the water again, just a cycle. So we'll get some clarification on that. I did have another question for you, Mike. Last time, as I remember, the water district had this drought response and then water usage went way down. And then the district came out and said, well, you know, our revenues are way down because the water usage is down, so we're raising rates to cover that. Is that what we can anticipate this time, that you'll need to raise the rates to make up for lost revenue?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I don't believe that we raised rates based upon lost revenue. We raised rates based upon the need for ensuring that the infrastructure was intact and was able to deliver water to the community the way that they expected to and the way that we expected to. It has nothing to do with lost revenue in regards to raising rates. It never has been and never will be. But in terms of, so to answer your question directly, no, that's not a consideration when we have to raise rates at all. It's always to do with making sure that the infrastructure that's in place makes, do we make sure that people get water, the clean water that they need and that they deserve? So the other thing is when it comes to brown lawns, just to kind of circle back with that real quick, a lot of the lawns will go dormant and they will come back in the spring, either on their own or with a little help. And here's the other thing, nobody wants anybody's lawns to die. What we're asking people to do is consider the idea that minimizing their water usage outdoors and maybe their lawns go a little bit brown, maybe they turn brown, but they can still water outside. It's going to keep it alive and it will come back very green in the spring.
Okay, I had had a recollection that some five years ago, there was, at a public meeting, an explanation that because revenues were down, that was the reason they were raising rates. But I, I don't know. I'd have to go back and do a little more research. Peter, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a few questions if I can and a couple of comments as well. First of all, I myself got one of those weather-based controllers from the water district. Thank you for that. And I already did my 15% voluntary reduction when we spoke a few months back. And while I'm sitting here at Chamber Council, I was able to drop another 20% right here on my smartphone just by going to the weather-based app, the ratio controller. Just by going to the weather-based app, the ratio controller and and dropping it right here. So, great item if the public doesn't have one, the rebate's over two hundred dollars for that. It'll pay for itself, trust me.
Thank you, council member.
No, thank you. It was the water district that paid for my my controller. We have a program, I believe, for fixing leaks as well. Could you tell us a little something about that?
Yeah, so we do have a program that if if you have a leak that you find. And I think it really depends on what side of the meter that it's on. But if there's a leak that you find, you should call the water district, because we offer a leak judgment, a leak, sorry, a leak adjustment. Option. And what that means is that if you are kind of unbeknownst to you or having water that's, you know, being wasted. And you don't know that it's being wasted and your water bill goes up significantly, call the district and we might, and we should be able to look into that. And see if we can implement that leak adjustment plan and help you out on that water bill. Nobody's trying to ever gouge anybody. It it's something that is, it's more of a public service opportunity that we that we offer. And so that, so so to answer your question directly, yes, I think that's what you're referring to as our leak adjustment program.
Fantastic. Yes, my myself, I discovered a leak in my irrigation piping, and one of our Calabasas residents reached out to me. She had a slab leak that they are currently ripping up their kitchen for, that has been leaking underneath for quite some time. So finding and fixing these leaks is also a huge source of solving our water crisis here. And then the last thing I want to mention, and maybe get your thought on, is the rebate for tearing up your lawn. And replacing it with drought tolerant plants is two dollars a square foot. There is no rebate for synthetic lawn, as I understand. I I've heard various reasons why one of them has to do with the fact that it's plastic and it's not really good for the environment after the fact. Do you have any more information on that, on what your rebate programs are and what we can look for in the future?
Yeah, that's a great question, council member. I believe, I think, don't hold me to this, but I'm pretty sure I heard through the grapevine that it might be up to be three dollars per square foot right now, too. As far as synthetic lawns are concerned, I I'm not really sure. I know that back in the day, meaning like five, five years ago, there was a lot of people that were like, hey, that's just cool. I can have a green lawn. I don't have to use water, and it looks cool. But I think you're right. I think after a while, it may it may degrade a little bit. And I know for anybody that has dogs, that lets, you know, lets them outside, that can get really hot, and it could actually burn their paws. So I don't, I don't think that, and 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 this might be also something, kind of going back to Mayor Buzagian's question about H O As. But in kind of like what what some of their laws are, they may not allow people to have synthetic lawns. And there could be some local ordinances as well that don't allow that. But that's not typically typically something that we find for rebates. That's something normally that I think people would consider purchasing themselves. And installing from a professional. I I remember, because because I actually also remember where there was people that would come out, if you would just allow your lawn to completely die off. Some people would come out and spray paint it green for the aesthetic. So there was a lot of things that were going on a few years ago that people are saying, hey, you know, we still want to have a green aesthetic, but we're looking at everything. So I don't think that that is one of the typical rebates that that is offered. Certainly from us and certainly from Metropolitan Water District.
All right, thank you, Mike.
David, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Mike, for being here in this presentation, which is so important. Unfortunately, it it's a, it's an ongoing issue and will be until we resolve some of our water issues. Where we're getting the water from, how we how we get it. You mentioned incentives, and we've shown and talked about rebates. I want to make sure, when you talked, you talked about the stick, of course, which is important, but also the carrot being the incentives. Are those all the rebates, or are there additional incentives that you didn't touch on that we can find elsewhere for the community?
Yeah, those are most of the rebates that that are offered. And and I think the most significant ones are gonna be, if you really, and and those are the main ones. Let's just put it that way. You know, there could be other ones that we're kind of still thinking about, but but we're still in in that stage of saying, is this, is this something that we think would actually benefit? And, you know, both the community and actually saving water. So, but those are the main ones.
Great. And then one last thing, you touched on it briefly. I've gotten comments from our community, those who years ago went in and put forward and changed their whole yard, front and back. To to put in drought tolerant plants and to make their usage of water reduced. And and at least according to them, and their bills thirty-five to fifty percent even more, but at least those numbers. And they're asking, well, how come we are having to reduce or being asked to reduce an additional fifteen percent? When we've already done, let's say, up to forty, forty-five percent? What do I, what do we tell those people?
Yeah, that's a great question. What we're asking people to do, okay, so we have three different tiers or or people's budgets, right? You're either in the efficient tier, the inefficient tier, or a wasteful tier, or I'm sorry, an excessive tier. And most people, when their water budgets are given an indoor and outdoor water budget. And what that means again is, how many people live in your home, and it's based on fifty-five gallons per person per day. And then again, outside is how much irrigable area that you have. Those people that are already in an efficient tier, they more than likely don't really need to do much, if if anything. Because they're already below what we're asking people to be at or below what we're asking people to be at. In fact, fifty percent of the community is in an efficient tier, and then the other fifty percent are, you know, I are are in the other categories. So it's about half and half. So what we're asking the people who aren't quite in that efficient tier and going up into the excessive tier, we're asking them, those are the people that really need to help. That that kind of step their game up. So while this isn't like a one-size-fits-all kind of effort. It is a message that we're trying to get out, and we're also trying to make sure that we're giving the recognition to all those customers. That are doing a good job and have been doing a good job, because it's just important to do that, as it is to educate. And try to bring along the others who are not doing as good a job as it can be. So again, it's just not a one-size-fits-all, but we are trying to make sure that we that we reach out to those people who are doing a good job and say, hey, keep it up. Thank you for everything you're doing. You're a great customer of ours.
Right. And a quick follow-up is someone who does not know what to do and wants to reduce, wants to to work with the system. Work with you. What do they do? Who do they contact? Where do they go to find out the information?
Yeah, what we'll do, I really, the easiest thing to do is just call the water district at our main number. Was it eight one eight two five one twenty-one hundred or twenty-two hundred? And just ask for the conservation department. And there's several people there that will be able to field their call and get them to the right person. We have, we have employees that will, that actually go out and have appointments and will meet homeowners and talk with them about how they can save water. Where they can save water outside or what they can do inside. So we have somebody who specializes in going out on and making appointments and going out to homeowners and talking with them directly.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member.
Mary Sue?
Thank you, Mike, for that great report. It really summarized the critical nature of our situation right now. And the list looks familiar of incentives and de-incentives. What else can our city do? Are you seeing any creative ordinances or anything that we could do? To incentivize or de-incentivize water use?
That's a great, that's a great, great, great question. We do know, I haven't seen any draft ordinances or creative ordinances, as you referred to. Right now to incentivize or de-incentivize water use. What I would, what what I think is really important, and this is a great, a great segue into kind of asking for assistance from the city. To be ambassadors and help spread the word to the community about where we are with the drought. And what what we're asking homeowners to do is really just be, continue to be great partners as we always have been together. I I was, I was thinking about reaching out to Mike Russo, and I've already talked to Arvin a little bit about getting some information up. On C T V and maybe trying to also get some information and newsletters. And just kind of working with all the different cities in in our service area to help kind of integrate those messages out to the community. I think that would be really great if we could have that type of continued collaboration.
At a minimum, we should be already running P S As and and information across our social media. And so hopefully, we'll pick it up. Could I ask the city attorney if you're aware of any ordinances? I'm specifically looking at our, the the green lawns.
So an ordinance that, for example, prohibits green lawns, we, we don't currently have that in the city. There are.
No, no, we don't. I'm asking for any creative solutions that you're aware of related to the drought that cities are taking to support their water districts.
Yes, of course. There are some cities that believe that have adopted a ban on new green lawns. There's a number of cities that have adopted. If not that far, then at least strict curtailments on new water-heavy usage irrigation. And that's also part of this. The city does have the, and well, the Model Water Official Landscape Ordinance was adopted a couple of years back. That sets standards for certain larger new landscaping projects, having to meet a minimum amount of water usage. But I can put together some more comprehensive information and bring that back to staff.
And then my last question to either our city manager, the city attorney. I do believe we need to be the ambassadors and the carriers of this message and demonstrate ourselves within our city. In our city properties. Good stewardship of water. And so my question is regarding the L N Ds. I all I, when I, wherever I go in the city, all I see are lush common areas and and lush lawns. It's pretty discouraging, especially when I know that we're responsible for a lot of these areas. Both at our parks and in the common areas. So my quick question for you, do, would you suggest we reduce our recycled water usage as well?
Yes, I think we're asking, everything, all water used to be reduced by twenty-five percent. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
What I can do is reach out to the city manager and have conversations with him a little bit more about about what we can do. With you and kind of work with you on on what that may look like.
My question to our city attorney is, do we have the authority to change those green lawns out?
Yes, the city has the power to make adjustments to the the lawns that are that are within our our control through the L N Ds. Depending on exactly what we want to adjust, we'd have to talk to the the property owners, which in some cases is the city, some cases are the H O As. But generally, we have the power to adjust how we use the water, particularly under the emergency powers, under a drought emergency. But we'd wanna, you know, as at any given site, we'd wanna take a look at it.
Well, I I would hope that our city manager would look into that as an option, and also our park usage. I mean, the parks are as green as ever, and if we are the ambassadors and the message carriers, I think we need to demonstrate our commitment. Last question, Mike, what is the? Flow restriction device? Is that something someone could put on themselves or?
Good question, Mayor Protem. This is, this is a device that is put on a meter that obviously is kind of seating. The obvious what it does, it restricts the flow of water. So there is state laws that say that we cannot take water, that we have to supply water to all, to all residences. This is a way to kind of to still to still supply water, but also to make it very inconvenient for people. So if you want to get like a glass of water, it may take you a couple of minutes to fill it up. If you want to take a shower, it may drip, like kind of drip out. So it's not like you're not getting water, but it's making it inconvenient to you. So the idea is to get people to say, hey, I need to either pay my water bill, or I need to get get with the program, so to speak. And do what I need to do and be a part of the solution instead of the problem. So it's more of a deterrent kind of situation than it is anything else, and it is something that we put on and not a homeowner does.
I I I was thinking that if somebody wanted to reduce their water usage by twenty-five percent and aren't really sure how to go about it. But they want to make that commitment, could they contact you and ask you to put on one of these devices and reduce their usage by five percent?
That's an excellent question. I don't know if I've ever had somebody say, ask me, ask me about that. So I don't know. I mean, I could, I could definitely, I, you know, offline, I would be happy to ask that question to some of my peers. At at the water district and get back to you on that for sure.
Thank you again, and please let us know what else we can do to support this important work of yours.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much for being here. I actually called the water district after speaking to you this week to find out. How to have them help me look at my current bills, look at what our water budget was, and figure out how I can reduce to the twenty-five percent. So they were, staff at the water district was amazing. We went through, I have the ratio device as well, and they helped me go through and figure out. You know, days, days to cut out and to decrease the times, but they really like walked me through it. So I was very appreciative of that, and I would urge all our residents to make that phone call if you need help. It was really easy and they were super helpful. I had a question about recycled water. Do you remember a few years ago on Las Virginas, you would drive by and there was like the big banners, because water was just being like sprayed. On those fields, and they were talking about how like the recycled water had to be like used or else it would. I don't really remember exactly, but there was a sign and it was like, don't worry, we're not really wasting water. Call for questions. But can you explain that since like the question of recycled water came up, and if you don't use that, what happens?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so historically, we own property kind of all the way down to, I don't know, is it down to? Not, not Keener Road, what am I thinking? Down Las Virginas Road to. Yes, yes, thank you, like King Gilant. We we own a lot of that property over there. So those fields that you're referring to historically have been used for excess recycled water. And that excess recycled water comes from the Tapia Water Reclamation Facility down the way in in the mountains down there. And that's the wastewater treatment plant. There's only a certain amount of water that we can discharge into the stream based upon both state and federal regulations. Anything above that, we have to do something with. And so historically, what we've done with that, since we couldn't discharge it into the stream, is to have to get rid of it somehow. And yes, we've had a longstanding irrigation system throughout the different communities. We call it our Purple Pipe System, which uses reclaimed or recycled water to irrigate, you know, medians or soccer fields or golf courses and stuff like that. But when we have excess water, it has to go someplace. And so those spray fields were used to get rid of that excess water. We still do it sometimes, but in the coming years, that's not gonna happen anymore. And the reason for that is because we're gonna take that excess water, and that's where we're gonna use to make a local water supply out of that reclaimed water. And that's called the Pure Water Project. And before I, I just so I have, because I know, I just want to mention this, I have been reaching out to several of your colleagues. At different cities throughout our service area to come take a tour of our demonstration facility. And I did, if I'm not mistaken, council member Kraut and Weintraub are gonna come Tuesday to tour the facility. But I want to make sure that the other council members know that I will be contacting them very shortly and inviting you to come out for a tour as well. So I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to come out and see what we're gonna do with that excess water.
Great. And then my last question is, I had a resident ask me about desalinization. Can you just touch on that and if the water district, just if you can touch on that?
Yeah, that's like the absolute worst, well, that's not the worst, that is the absolute last case scenario that that we would probably ever do. And it's, it's a whole host of different reasons. One, because it would take years and years to actually implement lots of, lots of regulations to get through. The one thing that people may not understand is that desalination plants require an incredible amount of electricity to operate. And it's not just pumping water to where it needs to go, but the actual electricity used to push water through the river of osmosis systems. Et cetera, et cetera. It 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 kind of is sort of counterintuitive unless it's an absolute last possible resort that you need to do. Because it's using a lot of electricity, which then promotes greenhouse gas emissions. And the greenhouse gas emissions, as we know, is part of climate change, and climate change is wreaking havoc on the state because of its erratic weather patterns. Which is pushing us into droughts more often. So it's, it's, it's a long, long, long reasons why we don't want to do it. But like I said, if there is ever that moment in time, which I don't think will be in our lifetimes, but if it was, that it's like, we don't have any other options. Then yes, that would probably be something that we would consider doing, but that would be so far down the road, and it's not even being talked about right now.
Thank you for answering the questions. I look forward to the tour this week.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you, Michael. We appreciate your presence here and the report very much.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time. I hope you have a good rest of your evening. Thank you for having me.
Okay, we've been going for a little over an hour and a half, so why don't we take a 10-minute break? I didn't mean to go this long, but we're trying to get through the presentations.
What item are we on, James?
Okay, we are back on the air, back to our city council meeting, slogging through the initial presentations. Our next presentation is the Sheriff's Crime Report for September 2021. And with us to present the crime report is one of our favorite repeat attendees, Deputy Mason De Mateo, who is presenting virtually. There he is. Hello, Deputy De Mateo.
How are you doing, sir?
Hi.
Good evening. I am Deputy De Mateo from the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. I am going to present the crimes stats for the month of September of 2021. So let's get to it. In September, we did have one strong-arm robbery. This was a random incident in a grocery store where the victim was approached from behind and the suspect attempted to steal their groceries. A little struggle did ensue and some threatening words were exchanged and the suspect was ultimately arrested. We did have six residential burglaries. These were spread out throughout the city. Three of them were in the Park Streets area. One of them was in the Saratoga Track area. One of the burglaries was in the Mulwood area and one was in the Mountain Park area. We did have three burglaries from locked vehicles. And we did also have eight grand theft incidents. Now, these grand thefts occurred, four of them were from a retail store. One of them was from a convenience store, two of them were from gas stations. And then one of them was from a vehicle where a catalytic converter was cut off. This occurred on an older model Honda Accord. There was one petty theft incident and four thefts from unlocked vehicles. We did have two stolen vehicles. One of the vehicles was a newer Porsche. And the other vehicle was an older model Volkswagen Tiguan. This brings a total of Part 1 crimes to 25 for the month with an increase in 25%. Any questions?
Okay, any public comment, Mari?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll turn, David, you want to start? If you have anything.
But thank you. And if you could reiterate briefly, I know there was a lot of helicopter flyovers and concerned citizens. What that was, maybe identify that for the public if you could.
In regards to which situation, sir?
I'm sorry, I thought it was training exercises of sort.
Oh, yeah, we did have training at the Covered Six facility. Covered Six is a security company. They also contract with our neighbors in Hidden Hills. And it was a, it's basically a way for deputies to encounter high-stress situations and hone their skills in active shooter scenarios. That's what the training was all about. If you heard about it, I'm sure they put a video together. So maybe we can check that out some other time.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody there for helping keep us safe and you all be safe.
Thank you.
Just a big thank you for everything you do. And I guess, yes, just a big thank you for everything you do. And I guess just maybe people will listen more if they hear from you, but just a reminder to lock all doors, house and car, car doors, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, a couple of the residential burglaries occurred because the houses were unlocked. I do want to bring this up, this happened this month, so this isn't a part of the September crime report. However, an individual in Calabasas was awoken by the family dog. The family dog was growling at an individual in their kitchen who walked in through an unlocked front door and started making himself some food. They escorted the individual out and he was detained by Lost Hills deputies. So make sure you do lock your doors at home, even if you live in secure areas. People somehow find their way in if they want to, and it will prevent these type of situations and scenarios.
Thank you so much.
Mary Sue?
Thank you, Deputy De Mateo. Did I hear you say that the strong-armed robbery was an individual who was trying to get someone's groceries?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, that's very sad. And he or she was detained and arrested and?
Yes, that is correct. They were arrested for attempt robbery.
And then you just told us another situation where someone walked into a home and was eating food as well. Are you seeing an uptick in this kind of desperation of people being hungry that they're resorting to armed robbery and break-ins?
It's a sad situation on both ends, but these type of situations shouldn't happen. So both individuals in these scenarios were experiencing homelessness. So maybe we need to get out there more and promote facilities that can provide certain services. I mean, this is, this is pretty strange, but one of the incidents happened in broad daylight and the other happened at near midnight. So it's kind of, it's kind of, kind of odd for someone to do something like that. But we do have the source, the services with the Lost Virginus COG, our mental health team. And so it is, it's sad and it's a shame. So this stuff shouldn't happen.
And from what I understand, if deputies encounter someone in that position who's creating crimes to eat, and you're right, it shouldn't be happening, there should be services at some point so that they don't get to this point of desperation. When was the, the, is it? Alicia, what's the name of the team that helps the psychological team?
The Met Team?
Did they come on out and assist with services or? We have this vendor now too that we have a contract with. I mean, what, how does this now work? Now that we have a vendor to help us with homeless, we've got the Rotary Club who's willing to buy groceries. We're starting, we've got these programs and?
Yeah, unfortunately, so when someone, so when someone commits a crime like robbery or burglary, we unfortunately have to handle those as a crime first and foremost. And then our Met Team, after the fact, can assess this person's specific needs and help them get on the right track afterwards.
Okay, so I would, I would ask that maybe the city manager or task force look into kind of making sure that those services are, the information is given to the individual, especially if they're released.
I, I think, I mean, I don't know the details of either of these situations, but I think, I mean, obviously someone broke into someone's home in the night when they were sleeping. It's like a crime was committed, whether or not.
There's no doubt about that.
Right. So I think that's, you know, the job of the sheriff to protect the public safety and then.
No doubt about that.
So.
No, I'm saying, we are paying now for a vendor to support, provide services.
But I don't think our vendor would be providing services to an individual in this situation. Like that Deputy Mateo is working with all of these other services we're providing in situations that would warrant that. But someone breaking in someone's house in the middle of the night would be.
Understood. But a lot of homeless people do end up incarcerated when they're mentally ill, just following the path that we're learning about right now when, like he said, maybe Met Services afterwards. I think that's a great idea. So I just hope that they get some services and.
It happens, it happens frequently when someone is experiencing or presenting the signs or symptoms of having a mental disability and they are in our jail. Met Services do contact them while they're in jail. And if they believe that this person meets the criteria for an evaluation, they can actually take them from our custody to a mental health facility, but they still will have to answer to the criminal aspect.
Absolutely, no doubt about that. And I'm glad to hear you explain a little bit more of what the steps are. I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Peter?
Thank you.
I have no questions, but thank you very much for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
So we'll thank you once again and thank you for waiting as long as you did. The good news is, this is the last business meeting of the year, so you're free.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay, we're going to turn to council announcements. Mayor Protem Mauer?
Okay, first of all, you just touched on the fact that this is your last meeting of the year. And as presiding mayor, there will be more official recognition at the December 8 reorg. But I wanted to congratulate you on doing a stupendous job during COVID. And then it's so symbolic that you are transitioning back, transitioning the council back to normalcy with in-person hybrid-type meetings. So congratulations and thank you. I wanted to announce that the Senior Center is having its fifth annual holiday toy drive. It'll start November 15 through December 20. Just bring any toys you have to the Calabasas Senior Center, Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. And all donations will be given to the Volunteer League of the San Fernando Valley to distribute. On December 18, there's going to be a shuttle from Calabasas to the Santa Anita Park Race Track for a lightscape at the Botanic Garden in Arcadia. And that again is December 18. And those are my announcements for today.
Peter?
Yeah, thank you. I want to actually share with everybody a little bit of what we did last week or the week before. I was able to take a tour of the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center, which is where our services are offered here for the city of Calabasas. It is a, an amazing facility that has everything from kitchens to housing, to mental health services, to job placements. They had a doctor on site. They even have a community garden and some really touching stories of how the, you know, homeless community in the area, those that are brought by, those that drop by, have been able to participate and really find a sense of community there. So I want to applaud our city for having discovered this gem and for signing this up as a resource that we have. I also went on a ride along with our homeless outreach coordinator. And he's Gabriel Graham of the COG. And was able to tour Calabasas with him and was interesting to see. We didn't encounter any homeless people in Calabasas, but we did run into a gentleman in Agora. And it was just amazing to watch his, his skills at approaching people, at starting a conversation, at touching this person as a human being, at starting a conversation. And the problem is deep and the problem is not going to be solved in a day. But we are part of the solution now, and I just want to say thank you to the city staff for everything that they've done and the programs that we put together here. And I know that's probably more of a task force report, but given our discussion with the sheriff just moments ago, I thought it was appropriate to plug that in now. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alicia?
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day and thank all of our local veterans for their service. But we have a beautiful veterans garden, so if you have an opportunity to stop by, I know we're not having a big celebration this year, but it is a wonderful place at City Hall to just come and show your appreciation. Also, just, I don't know if it's task force report or announcement, but just wanted to let everyone know that one of our local Brownie troops from Bay Laurel Elementary School coordinated with Gabriel Graham from the COG and put together hygiene kits for the homeless. So that was just something great, teaching the local, our young local Brownies just what people in need could use. And they assembled them and worked with Gabriel and are getting those out to the unhoused population.
Okay, David?
Thank you. First, I wanted to mention this Saturday, from 8:30 to 10:30, CPHA is putting on an emergency preparedness event at Calabasas Lake. This Saturday from 8:30 to 10:30, our epic organization will be there as well. Everyone is invited and it is open to all residents. Secondly, I want to congratulate our local business, Harbor Freight and Tools. It was recognized as one of the fastest-growing private companies in the entire San Fernando Valley by the San Fernando Valley Business Journal. They, excellent article on them and what they do. They're a hidden secret somewhat in our city. They're right near Agora Road. I also wanted to congratulate Calabasas High School. The Model UN team competed with 40 students, first time in a long time in person, obviously, at UCLA. And they won many awards from first on to third place, and congratulations to them. And last but not least, I would also join in wishing a very happy Veterans Day tomorrow to all those brave souls who have served, who continue to serve and protect our freedoms, love our country and do everything so that we may have our freedoms and still continue to do, to practice the way we do and live our lives the way we do. And we owe you a huge debt of gratitude. And since, James, this is your last meeting, I will congratulate you as well. Again, just like as Mayor Protem Mauer said, Alicia and you have had the shortest end of the stick given the last year and a half. Congratulations. And in that note, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And those who are celebrating right around the corner is also a happy Hanukkah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will turn now to oral communications and public comment. This is time in our meeting where members of the public can address the city council on any item not on the agenda. In order to do so, just utilize the Zoom features or call in. And you will have three minutes or less to speak on an un-agendized item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Mari, I do see a hand up, Lila Guillory?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
So if we could bring her in, she'll have stated her name, city of residence, and three minutes or less.
Hello, my name is Lila Guillory. I'm a resident of Calabasas. Good evening, city council members and staff, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to make a public comment tonight. I'm a 12-year Ambassador Girl Scout and a Calabasas High School junior and the Alternative Student Member of the Environmental Commission. I'm sure you've maybe heard my name and a little bit about my Gold Award project. And I wanted to make a few comments to both thank city council and staff and to make the public aware of the Fire Prevention Seminar that the city has very graciously allowed me to hold and advertise for. For the members of the public watching tonight, I invite you all to attend a virtual informational seminar held over Zoom next Wednesday, November 17 at 7:00 PM. The topic will be fire prevention and preparedness, a subject that is especially important as we are currently in the middle of the typical peak fire season. And more importantly, as we mark the three-year anniversary of the Woolsey Fire. This event is intended to offer our citizens the opportunity to hear from local experts, including the American Red Cross and the LA County Fire Department, on the steps they can take to protect their families, pets and property in the event of a wildfire. The Red Cross will speak about preparedness essentials, how to prepare an emergency kit and how to avoid the denial families can fall into by underestimating this threat and thinking that wildfires can't reach them. Assistant Fire Chief Drew Smith will be discussing the LA County Fire Department's Ready, Set, Go program and how to protect your property by creating defensible space and retrofitting your home and also how to evacuate safely in the event of an actual fire. Finally, we will also hear from a Woolsey Fire survivor, Ms. Bernadette Perry, and the lessons she and her family learned after losing her home to this fire in November of 2018. Bernadette is a veteran of the US Navy, a 23-year National Parks employee, Girl Scout community leader and a good friend. She'll provide her perspective on her loss and give insights to families on how to prepare for fire danger and also how to cope with the impacts of such events. Um, she'll provide her perspective on her loss and give insights to families on how to prepare for fire danger and also how to cope with the impacts of such events. Um, we expect the presentations to last for approximately an hour, give or take. And at the end of the presentations, we'll take questions the audience has submitted via chat as time permits. And we'll close with providing links to some helpful resources our community can use to help prepare. Um, I would also welcome the participation of council members as is allowed in this informational seminar for my Gold Award project. You can also find, you can find the link to join this Zoom seminar on the upcoming events calendar on the city of Calabasas website. Again, I can't thank the council and also my sponsor Debbie Larson of Public Safety enough for giving me this opportunity and the entire community the opportunity to learn what could be life and property saving information on this really important topic. Thank you so much and good night.
Thank you. I see no other hands. Has anyone called in, Mari?
We have no more callers or um hands up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next part of the meeting, which is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of items one through ten. And let me do it this way, as we've done in the past. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on any agenda item on the consent agenda, that's items one through ten, you need to raise your hand now or indicate that you wish to speak. And we'll bring you in to speak on those items. So anyone who wishes to speak on any item listed number one through ten, please raise your hand. I saw a hand go up and down twice. Okay. Uh, did Ed Albrecht's hand go away?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, no, there it's back. All right, Ed, why don't we bring in Ed Albrecht? I saw his hand go up first. Name and city of residence.
Ed, can you hear us?
I don't see him.
He's muted.
I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, I'm so sorry. Um, I meant, this is Ed Albrecht Greater Mall. What I meant to uh, not to raise my hand for this item. It's really for new business.
Okay, all right.
License plate, my apologies.
All right, we will whisk you off the panel and we will bring in Zachary Rosoff.
City Council, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, so my name is Zachary Rosoff. It's great speaking with you guys again. I actually spoke at the city council meeting a few weeks ago regarding the lid lock amendment, which is intended to reduce the use of rodenticides in our city by reducing the rodent problem. And we would do that by, of course, locking our dumpsters. Um, since then, I'm happy to say that the city has made some tremendous work on that. And actually, I believe it's agenda item number three. We are adopting ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash three ninety-six, which is an amendment to chapter eight point one six of the Calabasas Municipal Code. I want to thank you guys so much for moving forward with this initiative. It is really, really important that we curb the use of rodenticides in our city in order to protect our mountain lions, our owls, our hawks, our bobcats and our other native wildlife. So thank you all so much. Hopefully, this ordinance, this new amendment will help with the rodenticide issue as hopefully our shopping centers will see that there is less of a rodent problem. So they will need to use less rodenticides. Thank you all so much again, and I'm really happy that we were able to make this into a law.
Thank you, Zachary. Um, Mari, I see no other hands. Has anyone called in?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Last chance for public comment, going, going, gone. All right, what we're going to do for the council is let me turn uh and ask who uh, one by one, who, which items you want off, if any. David, do you need any items off?
Yes, please. Uh, number seven.
Number seven, okay. And Alicia, do you need any items off?
No, but I just want to kind of make a comment without pulling an item.
Yes, which item?
Um, just item three. I'm really proud of the city, how fast they worked on this and appreciate um that it was brought to our attention.
And that, that's all you wanted to say?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Mary Sue, which items?
Number nine.
Nine, okay. And Peter?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. So may I have, oh, and I'd like items nine and ten. I had questions. Um, so let's see, may I have a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six and eight?
Still moved.
Seconded. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Mauer?
Aye.
Mayor Bosajah?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Okay, they pass unanimously. We'll turn to item seven. David, this was the item you wanted?
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions. One, I, I'll ask our city attorney, I guess this is who I should ask. One, uh, why, if he could explain to the public and us why it wasn't brought into closed session? Is there a time deadline on this? And do we have, the third question will be, uh, is there any anticipated amount at this time that the city could expect by supporting this?
Uh, happy to answer those questions. Mayor and council, the deadline for action on this one is January second, twenty twenty-two. And mindful of that deadline, we put this on consent and on this item in open session to accomplish a decision by the council before the end of the year in the regular order. The amount, um, it is unknown how much the city will get. The, the formula for how the twenty-six billion dollar settlement is split across um the fifty, the fifty states and thousands of governments is a bit uh, uh, it's complex and is uncertain because it's a function of if more local governments opt in, then California gets more. And then if more local governments opt in, then that gets distributed depending on, by county, depending on how many cities opt in. So, um, but rough estimate is something in the low tens of thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands. And that would amount, would come to the city uh payable over eighteen years and can be used for a variety of services responding to the opioid epidemic, including in part for the uh recently approved contract with the city's um homeless services organization, San Fernando Valley Municipal or Mental Health Care Cooperative. The, and then last question there, uh, we put this on, went straight to open session on the basis of that timing component and a sense uh that the, this likely was majority support from it from the council. And because we didn't get the information from the state regarding the allocation agreements terms until relatively late. It was a timing challenge. Have it answer any other questions on this one. And as noted, it's uh, it's admittedly vague as to the math because it's uncertain.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Um, would you like to move approval of that item?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Mauer?
Aye.
Mayor Bosajah?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro? Harry Sizer?
Okay, thank you. Item number nine is the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash three ninety-seven. Uh, this is relating to council members' salaries.
Did you want me to start?
Yeah, I, I have some comments, but go ahead.
Yes, um, members of the public, this is an item that would increase the salaries of council members. And the reason I, I pulled it off is because um it was, we have a very long future agenda um requests from council members. It ranges from discussion of the Woolsey Fire funds, tennis and swim center operations update, um, three reports from the Environmental Commission and other really critical, important things. And this, this item didn't have discussion and I, I understand council member um Shapiro, this was your item. Could you provide us with some insight?
I believe I was not the only one who was at all interested in this and this came. I don't know if it was Mr. McCombeville or city manager Ron, if they're more uh apt to speak to it. I certainly, uh, if you're asking, am in support of it.
Well, I, I, I was told, um, all right, well, how, how did this, because this didn't come from a commission, did it?
Mr. Mayor, this did not come from a commission. This was uh put on at the request of two council members. And so it was put on as a, a discussion item or a consent item, considering the last cost of living increase was in twenty nineteen.
And I supported this coming for discussion.
Okay, so if, if the two of you did, I mean, do you want to speak first on this?
If, I'm happy to. Uh, I actually brought this up a while ago, thinking it was appropriate. I think we had this in two thousand eighteen. It went into effect after the November uh election. If I, I don't know what date. I'm, I'm guessing it took effect in January. And part of it was just the fact that we were going ahead at that time and uh increasing, obviously, staff, increasing all the COLAs uh for the past years and all of us. Obviously, this last year and a half has been very different, but all of us are very active, not just in chambers, but outside in many meetings. It isn't just our council meetings, which frankly are a pleasure compared to the amount of hours we all spend elsewhere doing work on behalf of the city. So uh, I had spoken to at that point, uh, our city CFO and asked uh about this going forward and discussing it. A council think it was a reasonable item.
Yeah, no, I supported, no, I supported the discussion. It had to do with the, when the COLAs were coming up and nothing really more to it. It wasn't, it wasn't really significant by any means.
Did you have other questions you wanted?
No, I just, it, it, I, I guess the protocol, I thought, I guess when two council members want something on a, a future agenda, that can happen. Obviously, it can go on this list. That's how many got on the list. But how this one got scheduled, you, you were involved with scheduling. If you were involved, well, then I understand.
I was given the draft agenda and had it on it already and I asked about where it came from, but I didn't put it on there. I just said, once I saw it on the draft agenda, I said, okay, we'll have it for discussion. I, but I didn't ask. I don't remember asking that it go on.
No, that's correct, Mayor.
But I have a couple, go ahead.
And, and I was just going to say, I mean, as far as I feel about it, um, I, I, I do agree, we do a lot of work in some or in a number of different task force and, and represent the city, but I just don't feel that the timing is right for us to give ourselves raises when we are looking at a a very large unfunded CalPERS liability and other very tough decisions ahead of us. Maybe this is, this can happen during the budget session. Um, but kind of at the end of the year or mid-year, it, it, it seems not the right time.
Okay, I neglected um to ask, I just saw Ron Allers is here. Um, do you, did you have anything to add, Ron? I have some questions, but I didn't know, I would have called on you earlier if I had seen you.
Yes, um, Mayor, no, I have uh nothing to add. It, it's uh just a typical report to uh modify the ordinance to increase the salaries for the five council members.
Um, what I'd like to see on this, uh, a, as, as the public may know, just because we approve an, an increase, it does not go into effect until after the next election cycle. So there's, if approved tonight, it would go into effect a year from now. Um, what I'd like to see though is I'm kind of in the dark about other cities. And that would be very helpful to me to see what other cities are size, what their councils are, are being paid. Now, I'm not talking about just the surrounding cities. Uh, I'm talking about even charter cities. I realize charter cities pay themselves more because they're able to go outside the government code. But it give me an idea if we took even charter cities of our size, just, just a general survey of cities, doesn't have to be a lot of them, maybe ten or twenty of them, and see what their council members are making. I mean, shouldn't we see that before we do this? Because we've never really looked at that. Which is hard to say I wouldn't vote for it. It's just I'd like to see that.
We can, we can definitely do that and then bring this back for a uh future council item, uh, say in January or February, once we're done with gathering all the data.
I, I think that would be helpful if anybody else feels it would be. I think it would be helpful. Peter, I didn't call on you yet.
I would definitely support uh looking at this after we have a little bit more information. I don't think there's anything uh out of the ordinary with this. I, I think it obviously goes into effect after twenty twenty-two. So there's no urgency to uh, to get it approved tonight. And I think uh having a discussion on it as opposed to having it as a consent item is probably appropriate.
Okay, so is that clear, Kendon, that we would like to have a little survey of cities, like a little dischart or something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll, we'll get on that and we'll bring that back in February, probably January, February.
And in fact, I think the league has that information in a database, so you wouldn't even have to do anything. Okay. I don't know where it is though. That's, that's one thing. All right, would anybody else like to say anything? Alicia, David, Mary Sue?
No, I, I think that's appropriate, um, to take a beat to get some information. Thank you.
Okay, and let's not, you know, on some of these items, they get really stale. Let's not wait like till next year and then say, oh, now we've got a week to pass it, you know? Okay, is everyone okay with that? All right. Um, Matt, do you need us to table it or can we just take no action?
Uh, no, action works and um consensus to continue.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Um, item number ten is, I took off the agenda. I, I worked on this draft of this letter. Um, but I wanted to, um, there are a couple um grammatical issues and just like very, nothing substantive. They're just like a couple corrections. Can I make those once this is approved?
The, to the extent that that's questioned me, the council could delegate to you the power to um make final adjustments.
Okay.
After approval.
Like, for example, it's Ca- California um Citizens Redistricting Commission. So when we address them, we should address them by their proper name.
Yeah, it seems like.
Things like that. I mean, that's basically what, what I'm talking about, but I don't want to go through them all here.
Yeah.
All right, and it was not time to do it. The other thing on this is um in conjunction with this letter, I, I've gotten some complaints from the community that when we sent out the um redistricting information, like online, that when they go to the links that the city's posted, they go to either dead links or incorrect links. So can we check those? And also, if the council is in agreement, you know, just some direction to maybe in addition to this, posting this letter, put uh, you know, maybe blast out something to the community again, because we're lagging on the comments with the county and the state. And if we don't get public comments to those commissions, they're not, we're not going to be taken as seriously. So I don't know whether we're lagging comments because the links didn't work or what the reasons were. Okay. All right. Um, may I have a motion to approve item ten?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Mauer?
Aye.
Mayor Bosajah?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Harry Sizer. And thank you for writing the letter.
Oh, you're welcome. Michael Russo helped. Uh, we, it was together, we did it together, but we definitely.
Thank you, Michael.
Um, okay, uh, we're now going on to the next item. Little script here. Sorry. Okay, item number eleven. This is a public hearing for consideration of the following matter, consideration of resolution number twenty dash twenty-one, excuse me, twenty twenty-one dash seventeen fifty-two, a request for a new sign program, sign permit and minor scenic corridor permit to establish a new sign program and for the installation of one monument sign, four building mounted signs, three vinyl window informational signs and one vinyl address informational sign for the Audi automobile dealership located at two four six five zero Calabasas Road, APN number twenty sixty-nine oh oh nine oh two seven within the Commercial Limited CL zoning district and the scenic corridor SC and Commercial Auto Retailer CAR overlay zones. Has a proof of posting and publication been filed for this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Public hearing is now open. Glenn Mickich, hello, welcome. I know you have a PowerPoint uh which we have up here. Can you go through that and relatively quickly? Can you go through that and relatively quickly? Are there any changes or corrections to the staff report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you know, take us through this report, but you know, it's kind of looks a little, I mean, it looks a little detailed, so maybe we can go through it fairly quickly.
Yeah, I can go through the PowerPoint fairly expeditiously here. Let me just share my screen real quickly.
Okay, great.
Hopefully, you all can see that. As you mentioned, this is a application for signs for the Audi dealership. Real quick, or project orientation, there's our project site and a view of the what we call the Calabasas Road District and all of our other auto dealerships that are that are within that. Brief history, the site was first developed in 1987. And then in 2019, it was taken over by Audi. And then in 2019, Audi decided to, they wanted to update their facility. It was approved by the Planning Commission and fits their new corporate image. It's now under construction and nearing completion, so now they're requesting approval of their signs to match the new building. This was heard on October 21st by the Planning Commission, who recommended approval to you guys for their applications. And there's a picture of the rendering of the approved and under construction building. So they're requesting approvals for nine new signs. Five of those are the more significant of the signs, four are just informational signs. And I'll briefly take us through those nine signs. I do want to point out that all nine signs are code compliant. This is a little bit busy, so I might just go to the next slide real quick, show you the signs by the elevation. This is the front elevation and faces Calabasas Road and the 101 freeway. Sign number one is the Audi Rings. It's the franchise sign. Sign number two is actually two A and two B together formulate one sign. It's the Audi Calabasas brand name. Those are both on the most prominent portion of the of the structure where the showroom is. And then over here on the left-hand side is sign number four, which we call in the report, that is a service center sign. Sign nine over here is just the address, but I wanted to point that out on on the street-facing elevation. On the east elevation, we have some more pedestrian-oriented signs. Sign three is right by the door there. It's only it's less than three square feet. Just has the Audi name and logo. And then we have two informational signs, just the hours of hours and days of operation on those doorways. And then on the west elevation, we have another vinyl sign, which is the hours and operations on that doorway. And there's a quick view of what those look like on the door. So the reason we're actually here tonight is because the monument sign, or what we're calling sign number five, is proposed at a height of 25 feet and 150 square feet in area. That is over a a normal base of 20 feet and 100 square feet. That could be approved without council approval. It is cited in a landscaped area. It is important to note setback 20 feet from the roadway to preserve sight lines and distances. And the basic material of this sign is metal paneling with acrylic sign copy. The building-mounted signs on the prominent facade there are all internally illuminated through the through acrylic faces. The lighting should be and will be, I think, friendly to dark skies. And we'll get and here's all let me get go back to the to the monument sign here to give you guys a look at it. It's basically on a support structure. Basic dimensions are seven and a half feet by the 25 feet in height, and you have about 14 inches for each support structure on either side. And again, the the Audi rings and the Audi name are going to be internally illuminated in that. Here's a brief look at the signs by day and by night to give you an idea of the illumination for that. You'll notice the monument sign for these are slightly different. The rationale behind that is we worked with Audi to get a code-compliant sign that met the area requirement. This sign at 25 feet high exceeds the area requirement, so there is not a need for variance for these signs. The monument sign, as I mentioned, can only be approved by council up to this height and this size. And that is if the council finds that it's necessary to allow the applicant some visibility compared to the other properties in the area. So we took a look at this property, and indeed, we found that this property out of all of the properties and that is probably the most limited and to the eastbound traffic on the US 101. That's mostly due to the Muro Road Bridge overpass and its related embankments and landscaping that exists, both both some planted and some native landscaping that we've preserved. We also looked at the other signs in the corridor and found that both the BMW and Mercedes dealerships do have similar monument signs up to the 25 feet in height and 150 square feet in area. So consistent within the corridor as well. These are sequentially numbered one through four, and that gives you a visual image of if you're driving down the 101 eastbound past a Muro Bridge, you can see in slide one here that the the dealership is not visible. You can barely see the BMW sign, which is at 25 feet in height. In slide number two, a little bit closer, you can see the visibility of the BMW sign coming into better focus. You still can't really see the building except for just the very rooftops. Then in slide three here, the more the buildings visible, but there's still some landscaping that's in the way of any signs. And you can see continuously down here that the BMW sign gets even clearer and clearer as you go. Finally, hereby by picture number four, we're passing this oak tree. And now you get a good good visual of the building itself. And where my cursor is right now is about where that that monument sign would be, and it would be visible by this point. I won't go over all this. The basic point of the sign design slide is really to 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 point out the fact that the the slide, the the signs and the and the structure matched. I mean, they're 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 complementary to each other in its colorations. The materials are durable. The acrylic and and the metal paneling is durable. The internal illumination feels very dark sky friendly and won't spill over to adjacent properties or the street. And that all the signs are proportional. The ARP did review this on September 24th and unanimously recommended approval of the design, also citing that they are compliant with the the guidelines of the scenic corridor and the West Calabasas Road master plan. And the panel also noted that they support the increase in the sign height and area. Again, we talked about the Planning Commission. They they agreed and recommended approval of the signs as is for for these reasons listed. I don't need to go into them again. And our recommended action is to adopt the resolution approving the sign program, sign permit and the minor scenic corridor permit for the Audi. Thank you very much, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Let me turn now to the city clerk. Are there any members of the public who raised their hands? Anyone who's called in?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have none.
All right, then we will close that portion of the public hearing, and we will turn to the council members for comment. David, would you like to comment?
Thank you, and thank you for the report and the diagrams. I was going to ask you about renderings from the street. You covered that version. Couple of quick questions. The slides, you mentioned oak trees. I want to make certain those trees would be maintained off the 101 freeway. They won't be at any point removed, so the view will be a much different view, right?
That's correct. As as far as I know, I believe that's Caltrans right away, and they're in control of that.
And those are oak trees you mentioned.
To clarify, relative to this project, for sure, no oak trees are being affected.
Okay, those trees in the photographs, the slides I'm talking about that you referred to.
Right, well, those are in Caltrans right away, not on the property.
And so Caltrans has total control as to what they would do if they're ever going to widen or or do anything. The freeway, those trees may be removed, in other words, correct?
Correct, and and I would hope we would encourage them not to. I think that one oak tree we tried to preserve a long time ago, and it exists today, so.
Great. And then the only other question was, I heard may be compliant with dark sky ordinance. I I would want to make certain we are compliant with the dark sky skies ordinance for the city, whether it's the red sign. I don't know what or the illumination that you were concerned about.
I think I misspoke. I meant to say they are compliant with dark skies ordinance. And we saw some pictures that showed exactly how soft that light really is through the acrylic faces.
And as indicated from the photograph, at least with the BMW, the monument signs in in the front, just similar to what you were considering tonight. I presume the Mercedes monument sign is in a similar location as well, front of the property.
The Mercedes monument sign is actually facing Calabasas Road. That dealership is right on the freeway, and so they have really good visibility. And so that sign, and I believe, and I'm not sure if my memory is 100% correct on this, but I think they had a monument sign there a long time ago. And so over the years, I think they've redone the sign, but but I think that's been existing for a while.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks.
Mary Sue?
Thank you for this report, Glenn. It looks like you and the commission and the Architectural Review Committee have done an excellent job. I have a few questions about illumination. Did you look at who can see the sign from above?
Well, the building mountain signs all face the street. And so and I think it's the communities of Vista Point and West Ridge you're concerned about, correct?
I that, yes, that's.
Yes, the illumination is going to be facing north, which is away from all those communities. So they should not get the light with those. And the similarly, the monument sign, the the sign faces face east and west and not north and south. So similarly, those light, the light from those signs should not face the communities themselves.
Should not, but could they?
I personally, I don't see how.
Okay.
I mean, they're 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 really not faced in that direction.
And with the 500-foot notice, were those communities given any notice about the signs?
Yes.
Okay. And should they prove to be too bright? And I think about the sign on the 101 freeway that was put up that the homeowners could see from afar, whereas before they had nothing but dark skies. Is there a way to change the wattage in the sign?
I'm looking for right now, I believe we built in a condition that we can adjust the lighting levels. I'm just trying to find it right now.
That would be.
Condition number nine.
Oh, great. Good. Okay. That that answers my concern, and it is in compliance with dark skies. Thank you, Glenn. That's it.
Peter?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to say what an excellent presentation. And I also did did really recognize that the monument sign that we're putting up on its legs is a deviation from what Audi typically does. And I see that they've done that to comply with the area requirements here while hitting that 25-foot height. And I think I think that was an excellent compromise, and and I don't know if our planning staff was a part of that decision, but I think you've done a really good job of protecting our our scenic corridor here as best we can and utilizing our our car overlay zone, because I think our auto dealers are an essential part of our city. So I think it's a it's a great plan, and I I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Alicia?
I don't have any questions. They've all been asked, but it was a really good presentation. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was very nice. Okay, so I don't have any questions. I appreciate the presentation. And with that, I will close the public hearing and now entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 20 dash 2021 dash 1752.
Still moved.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Potemar?
Aye.
Mayor Bosadja?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Moving on to item number 12. New business. This is City Council Consideration of an Automated License Plate Recognition, or ALPR, program. And we have Tom Miracle to to present and available for questions. Sergeant Painter from the Los Angeles, well, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and Jesse Mund from Flock, which is the company. So are they? Can they all be brought in? Okay, Tom Miracle? Okay, just just a moment. Let me let me make sure. Is everybody who should be in in? I don't know who's who's going to actually be in this part of it, but those three individuals, are they all here? I saw Jesse Mund. I see him in the audience.
He's being brought in.
Being brought in. Okay, and then I didn't see the other deputy. Sergeant Painter is not here, correct?
Miss Fair, he's in there, from what I can see.
I'm sorry, he's what?
He's in the Zoom.
Oh, he's in the Zoom. Okay, bring him in, too. And just let me know when they're here.
They're both in, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, everyone's here. All right. So who is doing the PowerPoint? Tom, you are?
Yes, I am.
Okay, if you could introduce yourself and then go through the PowerPoint.
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Tom Miracle, and I am a consultant contract to the city, helping out in public works with traffic engineering items. With me, as you've talked about, is Sergeant Brandon Painter from the Sheriff's Department and Jesse Mund from Flock Traffic Safety. So we're here tonight to talk about a potential automated license plate recognition program. This was this was brought to the city by the Sheriff's Department and simultaneously and somewhat separately by the Greater Mulwood Homeowners Association to look at helping out law enforcement activity within the city. Automated license plate recognition programs, or ALPR, systems allow for remote monitoring of license plates from cameras at locations along city roadways and within public rightaways. And what they do is they help identify license plates and vehicle types that the Sheriff's Department can then use to help solve crime. What these programs are not, just to get this out of the way, it does not take photographs of drivers or passengers. It's not a red light or speed enforcement camera system. It's not used for the traffic signal operations. It does not store any of the video capture. Data is not compiled or used and sold to third-party companies for any advertising, and the access to the data is restricted by state law to enforcement agencies and can only be used for official law enforcement businesses. So how the system works is it's a So how the system works is it's a camera mounted on either city or SCE poles. And it captures vehicle license plate information using computer processing within the camera system. And then what it would do is store a single photo. And that associated metadata would be available for 30 days before it gets written over. Law enforcement can then go and pick out that individual photo and data with it to use for investigative purposes. Again, after 30 days, the data is overwritten on the device by new data that's captured. Any saved data that gets pulled off of the system by the Sheriff's Department is required by state law to be held for a period of two years. Typically, what happens is license plates are on a, what's called a watch list. And when that license plate comes up in the system, the system would then notice, notify the Sheriff's Department of the time and location that that license plate was, was seen and would allow them to, if possible and with resources available, go out to that location and look for that individual or that vehicle. There are five locations that have been identified by the Sheriff's Department to be considered for the initial rollout of the program as kind of a pilot program. Lost Virginess and Agura Road, Calabasas Road at Parkway Calabasas, Park Aura at Park Sorento, Calabasas Road in Old Town and Mulholland Highway at Old Topanga Canyon. These are kind of gateways into the community that'll help identify these license plates that are on that, that watch list as people drive those vehicles into the city. The Flock Safety System, this was identified as the preferred system to be used. It's being used by a number of agencies in the region. They're, they're very small cameras that can be mounted even on a typical signpost if we wanted to, so they don't have to be at traffic symbolized locations that would require outside power. They have a small solar panel and there's a picture to the right on the slide. They use solar power and cellular communication and they can capture the data across multiple vehicle lanes. What we're looking at in, in terms of an initial program and agreement with Flock Safety is for five locations for an initial one year. We do have the ability to then authorize one-year extensions from that point. We do have the ability in the agreement as it's presented to you to terminate that fairly quickly. And the initial cost of installing the system is relatively low. It's about $13,750 for the year. And what we would do is at the end of that year or even along the way, the city would be working with Sheriff's Department to kind of identify, how is it going? Is the data useful and should we consider another extension? Along with this, state law requires the city adopt a policy for the use of ALPR. There's a draft policy attached to the council report that was prepared by the city attorney in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department. The policy covers the authorized use, the records and data storage, the sharing of information between city and Sheriff's Department staff, the use of the system and the training that's required. This program was presented to both the Public Safety Commission and the Traffic and Transportation Commission in late July. Both of the commissions unanimously, unanimously recommended not only approval of the use of ALPR, but also using the Flock system. So what we're asking for tonight is approval of use of the ALPR in the city, adoption of the presented policy and approval of a contract with Flock Safety. So with that fairly short presentation, we are available to answer questions.
Okay, if you could just take down the, there, so I can take a quick look here. All right. Now, let's turn to the public and see if, last time, I think there was one person who wanted to speak. There, Edward Albrecht, if we could bring him into the meeting, Mari?
He's in, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, he's in. Okay. All right. Hi, introduce.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. Ahmed Albrecht, President of the Greater Mulwood Homeowners Association. My wife and I are residents here in Greater Mulwood for almost 28 years. I did make some prepared present comments, but I know a lot of them have been spoken about tonight. But as a homeowner president, and I have been now going into my eighth year, I receive and respond to a wide variety of questions each month. And after a significant uptick that we had in 2019, 2015 and 16, the question of how we can better protect our community was our top priority. And we did an exhaustive search for a potential preemptive security option. This search ultimately led us to the Flock Safety Camera System, more commonly referred to as APRs, ALPRs. And during our security option search, we came to learn that over 70% of crime occurs with a vehicle automated license plate, excuse me, occurred with crimes that occurs with a vehicle, with a vehicle, sorry. Automated license plate recognition is shown to be a perfect deterrent, reducing crimes initiated with the help of a vehicle. So what is Flock? We found it to be a very successful vigilant system, a bankable crime deterrent that stands watch always to the ready to uncover potential threats to our residents' property and businesses. It sees like a detective, captures objective evidence like license plates and vehicle details and sends real-time alerts to law enforcement so they can take action. Flock Safety, we're going to emphasize, I know it was mentioned earlier, is currently in a number of our sister cities, City of Ventura, City of Port One Nene and City of Riverside. Also know that Flock Safety's technology, the solution complies with all local and state laws to build, to protect citizens, enforces law enforcement, the investigative leads necessary to go after suspects immediately. In addition to the ALPR support, supports a rapid response time from the Lost Hills Sheriff's Department, one a report is deemed serious in nature. And by the way, it's supported by the Lost Hills Sheriff's Department, Public Safety Commission and the Traffic and Transportation Commission. So I know this was mentioned, but what Flock system is not, it does not obtain or collect any personal information. It also does not immediately cause the sheriff to initiate pursuit. The level of pursuit is determined by the Sheriff's Department. So we all hope, and many of us, that this, we ask you to give this system a chance tonight. And I thank you very kindly for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised. If anybody else would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. Mari, has anyone called in?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm closing the public comment portion of the meeting, excuse me, of the hearing. Alicia, would you like to start?
Sure, I'm so excited that this item is finally here before us. It's been a really long time. Ed approached me about this. I hope I have the facts all right. It seems so long ago at this point. But then we started working with Captain Becerra, Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, and there's such a need for this in the community. I know that I think the first intention when this came forward was dealing with burglaries and things like that. But now the issue of street racing has become such a horrible issue on Mulholland Highway that this is one way to help address that. You know, I think it could really be a deterrent because whatever we're doing now is not working and the street racing is just increasing. So anything that we can do to protect our community and enhance public safety, I'm in support of. We've received a lot of emails from residents and I think all the letters I've received were in support and one opposed. But it just really shows that the community is engaged on this subject and supports our efforts. So thank you. And just again, thank you so much to Ed for bringing this forward to the council.
Okay, here?
Yes, I too am in support of this issue. I do have two questions though. The first one would be, we've heard a number of people supporting this in emails over the last several days. And one of them, more than one of them have mentioned burglaries at their home where they have reported the cars, the license plates, and they don't get the follow-up. Is this going to change that?
Maybe Brandon Sergeant Painter can answer.
Yes, sir. I wouldn't say it's necessarily going to change any of the way that we conduct our investigations so much as provide us an additional tool that will allow us to further our investigation. Oftentimes, I think license plates may be provided initially and that lead just doesn't pan out. So it's not necessarily that we're not conducting additional investigation or any follow-up. It's just that that lead didn't pan out for us, whether it been just a car that, the license plate wasn't correct, we weren't able to get the correct license plate or just some other reasons for things not being able to pursue that.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And I think, you know, if it is that the license plates are being partially read or partially misread, that perhaps this might actually help another tool that you can use to confirm that along the way. The second question I had was regarding the placement of the cameras. It always surprises me when I look at Calabasas because we have so much area on the San Fernando Valley side of the hill compared to the Conejo Valley side of the hill. But one-third of our residents are on the Conejo Valley side of the hill. And yet we have one out of the five cameras being placed on the west side of Calabasas. The second thing that really throws me here is that the residents on the west side of Calabasas are Lost Virginess north of the freeway and Lost Hills Road predominantly. And we're putting the camera on Lost Virginess south of the freeway. So given those thoughts, can somebody share with me how these camera locations were determined? And if based on my comments, we think that we might want to either add a camera or consider revising the placement of a camera?
How is a determination made to where to put the cameras?
So I'll, I'll start, I guess, with this. Essentially, this proposal came to the city with these five locations in mind from discussions between Flock and the Sheriff's Department about potential locations. I don't, I don't think any one of them is necessarily, you know, written in stone at this point. And we're certainly open to either adding more. I mean, quite honestly, it's relatively inexpensive for the kind of, of data and information tool that can be provided. So adding one at the Lost Hills Agura Road intersection would probably be what I would recommend as opposed to moving the one from Lost Virginess to Lost Hills.
And maybe we can continue that in our council discussions after everybody else has had a chance to comment.
Sure.
Mary Sue?
I'll pick up where Peter left off because that was one of my questions was the strategy behind the placements. And I think what I just heard from you, Tom, was that you actually got the list from the city.
The, the city received the, the list of five locations based upon the Sheriff Department's request for what they felt were the top five. It's, it's an attempt to kind of look at what are the gateway entrances into the city? The one in particular, I think, at Park Sorento, Park Aura, was that's an area where they, they've had issues with street racing and things. So having it there was, was an attempt to kind of provide them with extra data. But again, if, if there are other locations that council thinks may be better suited or if we want to add one or two more to cover a broader area, we're certainly open to that.
Yeah, I guess I think that is something we should discuss. And I just had a question about the intersection of, is it Park Aura and Park Sorento? That's tucked inside in a residential. You're off the main drags for street racing. So I wasn't sure why that was. I mean, maybe it's heavily trafficked, so it might be worth looking a little bit closer at those. So I have a couple more questions. I think, Tom, you might be the best to start off. You mentioned a watch, a watch list is provided to the sheriffs or to Flock. And then as they enter the city, Lost Hills gets a ping that they're, they've entered the city. Who's on that watch list and how is that compiled? I mean, are these stolen vehicles? Are these, are there warrants for the owners of the vehicles? How, who's on that list?
The sergeant can probably address that more succinctly. It's, it's essentially, it's not a city list. It's not a flock list. It's not even a Sheriff's Department list. It, it comes from the, the state and the federal government. So maybe Sergeant Painter can address that.
Yeah, I think Jesse probably knows a little bit more as, as to where this comes from. But my understanding, this is similar to our other ALPR systems that are on top of the patrol cars. And that list is, comes from SBS, which is the stolen vehicle system that's maintained by the day, by the state. That will give us information as far as whether or not there's a stolen vehicle or any like felony warrants for a vehicle. It doesn't give us any like driver information or registration information or anything like that. It's specific to vehicles that are wanted and entered into the system as wanted vehicles.
Sergeant, you're exactly correct. It's, it's the same exact list on the flock cameras. We pull it down from the California Department of Justice every two hours to keep it as up to date and, and current as possible. But it is that same California SBS list that you referred to.
And I heard stolen vehicles as an example and also felony warrants?
Yes, ma'am.
But a felony warrant is attached to an individual, correct?
Often times, there will be vehicle information that's related to a crime. And if there is, that vehicle can be entered into SBS as well.
Okay. Can licenses be inputted by a third party? Like, what, if the information gets to the sheriff's station, can they add their own data into it of licenses? Or through their flock system or?
So you mean as far as the Sheriff's Department being able to add license plates to a list?
Yes, to, to track.
They can. However, there is a pretty significant audit process to that as well that's managed and tracked by the Sheriff's Department.
How could this system be abused?
I mean, with proper oversight, it's, it's easy to audit every time a search is made and audit every hot list that comes in, in action that was taken. So with proper oversight, and that's the justification for the state law and the policy, it's meant to curb any type of abuse to these types of systems.
In addition, the Sheriff's Department has a fairly exhaustive policy that they've written separately for, for how they deal with internally what their staff is allowed to do and not allowed to do. And there, there's extensive training that goes on and they've, they've shared that with us.
So I'm going to be candid here. I am very concerned about the privacy aspect. We have some very high-profile residents, as you could imagine. And I wouldn't want the paparazzi to get, you know, no one, certain licenses come into the city or, and frankly, I think one of the most horrific things that's happened in the city of Calabasas was the deputies that took pictures of Kobe Bryant and the crash scene and violating that privacy. And I just want to make sure that we don't have rogue anybody that can access this information and track anybody. So you're assuring me that that can't be done? All of you?
Our policies, and I believe the system also requires it's a, are in compliance with the state law. So in order to access something, it's like a need to know and a right to know. You both have to have the right to know something and a specific need, which means we have to enter in a file number or some kind of case number that's associated with an investigation. Deputies are. Um deputies or detectives wouldn't just be allowed to search for plates indiscriminately for no reason at all. And all of that is logged. Each, each thing that they search for.
Okay. Any other comments about that? From Tom or Jesse?
The sergeant's exactly right.
Okay. All right. Well, I
Sorry, if I could just comment on from the city side, really, there's, there's going to be somebody who is quote unquote, in charge of the system because it's the city's contract with Flock. But there's no, there's no need for city staff. Um, and there's no desire from city staff to access the system, to get into the system. N- nobody associated uh at the city itself is a law enforcement officer and, and quite, quite frankly, has the, the legal right to access it anyway. So from the city side, our policy is, is, um, you know, it, it has a person that's going to be named to be in charge of the system, but they don't have the right to access it per state law in terms of um what Sergeant Painter said, kind of a right to know and a need to know.
Okay. Last question for city attorney. Is there um an obligation to notify the public that they're under surveillance? Or was, is this not fit the surveillance description?
So uh uh one comment, one clarification as to Mr. Miracle's comments. The policy does authorize the city manager or designated access to data, but only for a law enforcement purpose, as might be true for a code enforcement purpose. In discussions with the code enforcement staff, we did not anticipate using this, the software for that purpose because code enforcement doesn't depend on license plates and, and cars. It depends on building problems or unlawful activities at a house. But the option is preserved in the policy. To answer your question, Mayor Protamauer, the, there is no legal obligation to provide notice to the public that they're, that they will be surveilled by the system because it's in public. It's the, the legal equivalent of having a detective stand on the corner, writing down every license plate. And because it's only viewing what's already in public, there's no obligation to provide notice to it from a legal side. Obviously, the city may wish to go beyond the bare minimum. This discussion provides that notice and the city could do more if there was support from the council.
Um, Tom, do you have experience with cities posting some kind of warning next to the camera that you're under surveillance? And could that be another deterrent?
So my, my experience is uh with the red light enforcement program in the city of Ventura. Um, the state law actually re- requires red light enforcement programs to, to have uh notification signage in advance of those intersections that are are, are using red light, um automated red light enforcement. And uh as the city attorney said, there's no current law that, that requires it for this, this type of system. I've talked to the city of Ventura um police department about um their program because they have uh I think a dozen or so of the flock cameras and that they're adding more. And they indicated that they're not putting out any additional signage similar to how their program is running for red light enforcement.
Thank you.
Okay. David?
Thank you, and thank you all for being here and bringing this forward. I know it's been a a, a lot of work put into this. Um, number of questions going continuing off Mayor Protamauer's comments. Uh, there is the same concern. I've, I've had it for a while, concern of abuse of privacy. And a lot of the public has been concerned for some time, since we've been talking about this for some time, about it being used for anything other than serious crime or potential crime issues. It's not going to be used. Let me ask you that. It's not going to be used for issues of registration, red light. That is not the purpose of what we are talking about here tonight. We're talking about felonies, uh uh catching criminals who may have started somewhere else or maybe uh potential burglars, things like that, correct?
Correct.
And it won't be used. So we can re, re uh enforce to the public. It's not uh that type of issue that they're going to be uh hit with a photograph and a registration that may have expired a week. That's not, that's actually not how your time's going to be spent here.
No, we don't use it that way. And that's not how the system's designed to operate.
How many other cities is the flock system currently used in or counties right now? Approximately?
Across the United States or just in California?
California. Let's stick with California for now.
So there's about seventy-nine uh law enforcement departments that are using flock, uh including uh every major county from Ventura, uh Riverside, San Bernardino, LA County, uh and even some in San Diego County.
So just, just to add to that, uh locally, the city of Malibu did um approve a contract with Flock a couple of months ago, and, and they're working through the process of internally approving up a policy so they can implement.
Let me ask you, it, I'm sure you have documentation or records or information, how successful have has Flock been in either catching criminals? I, obviously, it's a deterrent. Uh, if you have any records or information that can identify what, what you've done in other cities, let's say, in, in the LA County area or in California?
So we, we do generally request, uh, you know, press releases from the agencies themselves because we don't know the results of what happens. Um, the city of Azusa posted a thirty day results and kind of what had occurred, and they had recovered seventeen stolen vehicles and returned almost four hundred thousand dollars in stolen property. It helped them with multiple part one crimes. Uh, city of Hemet, they did uh their six month evaluation and a hundred and fifty-two stolen vehicles recovered. Uh, they had uh a hundred and thirty-nine felony arrests, recovered one point four million dollars in stolen property over a period of six months. So it, it can be significant, but uh uh it really depends on the city and, and, and such, plays a role.
And this is a question which you may or may not get in our city. It will come up, I'm sure. Are there any other designs for uh the flock system uh other than what's shown as far as color, maybe blending more i- in the environment? Uh, that's something that people in our community do care about greatly.
It, it was a sa- similar conversation in the city of San Marino, you know, just to, to blend uh very aesthetic and, and the nature. Um, these are very small profile cameras in comparison to the, the other options that are out there. They're about the size of a, a small football. Um, there is the option of, of running power to them if you want to eliminate a solar panel. However, that, that will significantly limit locations and increase cost to the city.
Just, just to add to that, the, the, the size of the camera and even the solar panels are going to be smaller than what we currently use for our traffic signal system, the, the um, the cellular, uh, sorry, the, the um, the wireless communication system we have for the signal system has fairly large solar panels mounted on top of poles. So it's, it's going to be smaller and less intrusive than those a- already are. And in many cases, it's going to be mounted on the signal pole, kind of mixed in with all that other equipment.
Obviously, uh, an additional benefit to the city is the photos of the licenses that, that will come up from the system allow our, us to not put our residents potentially in harm's way by going out and trying to get a photograph of a license plate or vehicle that they may be concerned about in the city. That's another benefit, I would think of the system as well. Originally, this is, this has been an issue for a long time. I met with predecessor sheriffs back in eighteen and nineteen uh when we were having a string of, of issues in the community as well. And it's, this is a much better option than what we were presented with at that time. So I'm thrilled about this. Uh, only other comment would be as uh Peter had mentioned, I'd like us to look or consider, if not now, the, although I think now is as good a time as any, other locations such as uh Lost Hills near the Saratoga area and possibly north on Lost Virginus, north of the freeway as well as cons- it areas to be considered uh depending on what everyone believes and especially the sheriffs. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Very excited for this.
Um, I have a couple of comments. Uh, I, I'm in favor of the program. I do have some significant privacy concerns regarding the cameras, but they've already been expressed here. What I'd like uh is to make sure that we um you know, watch this and monitor it, give a status report at some time uh regarding some of the pri- some, not only the effectiveness, but some of the privacy concerns. If there's been any issues, complaints, um, things that ne- negative results of, of, of this uh program. I don't know that there will be any, but I'd like to know that wh- when it comes up for renewal because it's kind of a pilot program. What I'd suggest, and I understand, and I thought of the same thing, there's certainly plenty of locations that are not covered that could be arguably covered. What I'd like to do is to try to, you know, just approve this tonight and then uh come back with a list of secondary locations that we could add. We don't have to wait a long time to add them. I assume that once the program's in place, um, it would be easier to just add locations. We won't be starting from scratch. And probably there'll be some economies of scale too. So I, I don't know. Do, how do you guys feel about that?
No, I, I think that's a good idea to approve it with these locations. And I think we should also check back um with Lost Hills to see if they have any modifications to the list to really work with the sheriff's station.
Maybe we just ask them, look, if you, if you had an additional three to five locations, where would you put them?
Great idea.
And then see where they put the dots and then see what we think. Because they know the traffic pattern.
Exactly. They know what the crime, they know what's happening in that.
Yeah, the crime, the criminal activity patterns. So um, are there other comments based on what was, that has been said?
You, you know, I, if I could just add, um, I think that the monitoring or the feedback that you've just requested, if we could see it on a monthly basis, I want to see it, you know, if, if, if they're using it at all, if it's helpful at all, or if we're getting complaints about people getting stopped, um. It seems like it's, well, anyway, I'll just leave it at that.
I, I don't, I mean, monthly is kind of frequent. I, I, I don't know. Are we going to get anything every month? Typically, what will we get in a month? For five locations?
We should ask.
Do you guys, I mean, would it be quarterly would be more appropriate? I mean, in a month, we may get nothing, right?
And Mayor, I think that might be a good question for Jesse.
No, that's what I'm asking at the panel here.
I, I thought Jesse said that he didn't get the re, um, he didn't get the uh results, but.
Mayor, members of the council, maybe I can interject here a little bit. Um, the, the sheriff's department already comes monthly or quarterly to give reporting. Maybe they can just add this to their normal reporting.
All right. If that's, if that, if they're going to have that information. Because you, usually we get it like a month later. So within a month, will they have that information to give?
I think we can arrange that.
All right. Okay, that's a good suggestion. Um, any other comments? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing and may have a motion to approve the automated license plate recognition program.
So moved.
Seconded with the comment, as you mentioned, that we're asking them to also evaluate additional locations and come back to us with those recommendations at a time to be determined in the future.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Protamauer? Mayor Protamauer?
I heard you. I'm thinking. Um, you know, I really have a hard time with this one. I, um, it's for one year only, right? And then we will revisit it. I don't think the public knows what's happening. Um, and I think that if there was greater awareness about these cameras going up and the surveillance being done in the city, that we would, we would hear from them. Um, so I think that we need to do some. Um, I'll vote yes for one year, and I will carefully look at everything that comes back. And if that, there, it's not helping at all. Um, or if we get complaints about people being stopped or they're just uneasy. I live at one of those intersections. I'm in and out. I am going to be on camera a dozen times a day.
Better not do anything.
Exactly.
It's embarrassing.
I mean, but how do you, how would, how would that make you feel?
I would, I'm so excited. I can't tell you. I'm so excited about this. I think
I know you are.
No, but the public, the people that we're hearing, the way it came to us, the issues that were happening throughout the community, they want greater, they want us to be able to support law enforcement. If it doesn't work, obviously, we're not going to continue with it, but they have a really great track record in others.
That's another thing, frankly. Flock is a very small company. I don't know who they are, what they do, or, you know, I've got some PR stuff here, but it's just a real leap of faith. So I'll vote yes, but
No, I'm saying the AI, the, eh, the automated, automatic license plate reader program has been successful throughout, whether they're using flock or not.
Did you look at other companies? I mean, I think, is Tom still there? Well, I, 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 we're voting, so I think we stop.
We're a little
So I'll vote yes, but I am I am so conflicted.
There's a problem, by the way, we can always come back before a year. I mean, if the, if there's a serious problem that arises and brought to our attention, we're going to get monthly reports. So that's a yes vote?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor of San Antonio?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Harry's five zero.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move on to informational reports to check register for the period of October fourteen to seventeen. No questions? Task force reports, anybody?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Protam and fellow council members, I wanted to share with you, uh, our Headwaters Corner Board has met several times with the tree people. Uh, the tree people land trust has taken over for MRT as the stewards of the property. And um, just to, to get you all up to date, the bridge has been uh replaced with the fire uh settlement that they had. In addition, the demolition of the uh, the burn structure has been completed and the ground is safe and accessible to everyone now. Uh, the mass, the Masson House is uh in a state of disrepair, not from the fire, but just from age. Uh, needs historic reservation, uh, which is a little more expensive than just uh, you know, normal construction. Uh, but the trailers that were there temporarily for offices have been removed. Uh, so the site is now ready for, you know, it's repurposing. Um, at this point, we have a new site plan has been presented to us uh from the tree people. It includes a multi-purpose classroom building that would uh, you know, have uh instructional space as well as space to gather. Um, they have restrooms there that would be accessible even in the off hours to trail users. Uh, there's a building at the north end of the property as well. Um, and they're proposing a barn behind the Masson House, uh, which would uh also have two parking spaces back there. Um, the thing that they noted in our last meeting was that aside from the barn and the two parking spaces, they have no purpose uh or desire to use the Masson House in any of their programming. Um, their uh programming, we've been waiting for. We've gotten a staff report, uh, a uh, an agenda report and will be attending a meeting on Monday, which I believe is open to the public. If anybody else would like to listen in and see what's going on, we'll be hearing more about the programming that they're going to be doing there. Uh, the, the agenda report that we have now shows that they will be having some environmental things such as uh seeds and planting and such. Uh, but it's my understanding as well that they'll be doing fire resiliency a, and a number of other topics. Those don't seem to be in the handouts. So we won't have more information for you until after Monday. But it's been a while, so I thought I'd get you up to date on what's going on with the Headwaters Corner property. Uh, that's where we're at, and I'm sure we'll hear more about it later.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else for task force reports? Oh, David, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
No worries, no worries. Thanks. Um, Alicia and I met with the Bay Laurel PFA for the first time, what, in one, over a year and a half, a quarter, year and a half. And that was was a nice change virtually, but still nice. And I attended uh SCAG, C H D and regional council meetings. We discussed lots of issues related to housing, a number of the issues, uh, what we're going to be doing as a region with regard to the recent bills that passed uh up north, uh, also regarding mobility and transportation, funding availability for those regions or those areas that would, would have it for housing. Uh, SCAG also has an economic summit. I'm sure we all know, but all council is invited
I'm sure we all know, but all council is invited to register and attend as well as city manager. That's December second from nine to twelve, and that's their first SCAG in-person event in almost not quite two years. I also attended Valley Economic Alliance Board meeting. Again, there is a first in-person event at Pierce, a housing summit. It's going to be uh, December third from ten to two, and that is open as well. Lastly, Alicia and I met with Kindon, John and Debbie Larson, Emergency Preparedness, uh, to go over all the work being done, and there's quite a bit. And I know there'll be a follow-up at a future meeting uh, from Kindon and or uh, the the staff on that. Uh, that's it, thank you.
I want to mention that the uh, LA County, um, convening of mayors, which traditionally some of you have been to as mayor, has started again. They're having their first one in about two years. It'll be later this month. And if there's anything out of that that's worthwhile, I will bring it back to you. Um, have you been, Alicia? You've been, right?
I think so.
Okay. Um, so anyways, that uh, the Chamber of Commerce is currently doing its recruitment for a new president and CEO. I will make that announcement as soon as they let me know who they've chosen. They've conducted interviews this earlier this week. Um, aside from that, I don't have anything else other than, um, well, one's future agenda item requests, so we're not there yet. All right. So does city, does city manager have anything to report?
Nothing to report tonight, mayor.
Uh, future agenda items, there is a constitutional amendment which was filed to overturn SB nine and ten and uh, it also to eliminate future problems in that area by enshrining in the state constitution uh, local control over land use decisions. So at the appropriate time, can we put a placeholder? Because it's going to go rather quickly, I'd like to put it on the agenda sometime in January. And I'll I'll provide the the language for the next mayor. Okay, uh, Peter, do you have anything?
Got it.
Mary Sue? Alicia?
Just one thing, and I've mentioned it to Kindon, but I want to mention to the council. I just want to make sure we're following and educating the public on the county's framework for when they do allow um, meetings to take place without masking and um, events and when for businesses to operate without masking, what that will entail. And that will include our own facilities. So I just want to make sure we're aware of what the aware of what the thresholds that will have to be met for that to happen and so that we can plan accordingly. So when the county does say, you know, you don't need to wear masks in your meeting if X, Y, and Z has been accomplished, I want to make sure we're on target for all of these things. And that we're also discussing um, what's happening at the senior center and just I we're hearing a lot from the public, so I just want to make sure we're having that conversation. I guess we can have it publicly.
Okay.
Thank you.
David?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, and I would remind the public that um, we have no more business meetings this year, and our next meeting will be reorganization on December eighth, and we will keep you advised as to the form of that. Uh, presently, we're probably going to be in here, but there will be limitations as to who can enter and numbers of people that will be allowed to enter. Is that correct? And we may have a reception afterwards, we're not. But we'll we'll announce it to the public when we're ready to announce it. Things change all the time. Okay, so with that, um, uh, there being no further business, it's now ten thirty, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.